It's nice to see all of you here tonight. My name is Susan Wilson and with me is John Truitt. And we are your moderators for tonight. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Redding area and Viva Downtown, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum for the Redding City Council. The election will be held on November 4th. This isn't a surprise to any of you, I know. I want to remind you that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active citizen participation in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We have partnered tonight with Viva Downtown, with The Cascade, with the Redding Record Searchlight, and with the Shasta County Arts Council to bring you this forum.
So, let's describe the format for this evening. Now, the order of speaking has been determined by lot. The statements will be timed and the timekeeper will hold up a white card indicating one minute remaining. Want to show them how that is? There you go. A yellow card indicating 30 seconds remaining, and a red card indicating stop. So, all questions will be directed to the candidates by Susan and myself. Now, as you came in, you were handed three-by-five cards on which to write your questions. If you didn't get a card or need more cards, please hold up your hand and a League member will provide one. When you finish writing your question, please hold up the card so a League member can collect it. And please ask questions of a general nature rather than questions to a specific candidate. Now, to start, each candidate will make an initial presentation of three minutes about their background, areas of concern, and reasons running for office. We will then direct questions to the candidates in a rotating order so that the same candidate is not always the first responder. The candidates will have one minute to respond to the question. Our timekeeper will keep the candidates appraised of the time. Now, Susan and I were already talking about this, and sometimes questions may become pretty complicated. So, in that instance, we will ask the timekeeper to give one more minute to each person. And each candidate after that will make a closing statement of two minutes. We appreciate your attendance at the forum tonight, and we'll end the forum no later than 8:30 PM. We're both absolutely dedicated to that. So, let me remind you that all questions will be addressed to the candidates by the moderators. So, please raise your hand for assistance in getting a question to us.
So, with that, I think that we'll just leap right into this. The candidates for election for City Council this year are, and I've got to get in the right order because I rearranged the order, Michael Quinn, Patrick Henry Jones, Brent Weaver, Kristen Schrader, Francie Sullivan, and Michael DaCristo. So, we're going to start with you, Mike. And the first question that we have tonight is, for those of you who don't know me, I run the -- huh? Oh, yeah, that's right. You get to do opening statements first. Thank you for that gentle reminder. So, three minutes for your opening statements, ladies and gentlemen, and we have a microphone that you'll need to pass along. Mike, you first.
Thank you very much. I've always wanted to have a full house for these debates, and I've been to them before. There's 10 people that show up, and now we've built this up to where it needs to be. But this is also my greatest fear, is being on the stage of The Cascade Theater, because if somebody starts music, I'm not dancing. It's not going to happen. I've said that before. I'm running for the City Council, not running against anybody, I'm running for the position. I made this choice after being put onto the Redding Electric Utility Commission, and I started seeing that during the worst times we had, we raised our electric rates 50 percent to people. This is wrong. It's wrong for businesses, it's wrong for people. It's also wrong for the Redding Electric Utility Commission, because they don't control anything. When you control half of a formula, and the other person could go home and turn a switch off and stop using electricity, it didn't do them any good. This causes a lot of problems. I've served on three commissions. I've got a total of three years working within the city. I was on the California Horse Park Commission. That, to me, was one of the worst mistakes we ever made, was not following through on that. Also, on the original police building commission, and we should have built it then, and it would have been a bigger building and it would cost a lot less. And I was put onto the Redding Electric Utility Commission because they needed somebody from the financial accounting background. And that's where I'm in. I'm a numbers person. I look at every single number, and if you put them in the right place, it's not Democrat, Republican, left or right, a number is a number, and it goes in the right place. If you budget it and you put it there, then you know where you're going. The way they do their accounting is a half cash, half accrual basis, and you don't know for 18 months from the day that the year starts as to where you're at. What are the final numbers? This is wrong. You can't track that way. I'm used to tracking to the penny, and people kind of laugh at that. I worked for a multimillion dollar company. I'm at BAW Trucking. We had 160 logging trucks. Why was a penny important? Because we did 160 trucks, four trips a day, and we had 4,800 board feet per load. One penny is $30,000 a day. We tracked to the day. But it also meant that our numbers were so exact, and we sat down with the Teamsters to negotiate, our numbers, those negotiations took one hour a year because we ate lunch. They knew our numbers were right, they knew we were being honest with them, and we told them exactly what they were, what we were going to be able to pay. We went back and forth a little bit, negotiations were over. It's that simple. So, it's all about the numbers, and that's what I'm going to be running on. You're going to hear me talking about them. I've been through the budgets, I've been through the numbers, and I will tell you what I'm going to see. I appreciate everybody else up here. This has been a long, grueling affair, and we're not over, but it's a really important year, and we're finding out tonight that it's important by how many people are here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Susan. I really would like to thank everyone for showing up here tonight. Mike has said earlier that we do a lot of these debates, and we have more coming, and it is great to see so many different people here from Redding. This is a great cross-section of our community. I've been very fortunate and very honored to be a Redding City Council member and being able to serve from 2002 till present, from 2006 till present. I first ran in 2002, and I lost, but I didn't stop. I kept on going because I believe in the quality of Redding. I think we have a great town. And I know we have a great town because our town is represented, and the people make the quality that this place is. The quality of the people is absolutely the very best. And I wanted to serve, and I wanted to make a difference. When I went to those council meetings back in 2002, 2003, '04, '05, and '06, before I was first elected in 2006, I saw certain things that happened, and I saw lots of 5-0 votes. And I knew that was not indicative of our town, that there are always different ways to approach every problem. I'm a fiscal conservative. I've always been that a way, and I will continue to be that a way. I'm very consistent in that manner. Now, sometimes, you'll read in the paper, "We have different opinions on council," and it's not dysfunction. I can tell you that different approaches to problems is healthy. It's not dysfunction. And so, when you see a four-to-one or two-to-three, those aren't things where we are upset personally at one another, we just have different ways of approaching problems. For example, on Stillwater Business Park, I did not believe that spending $27 million and for the city acting as a developer is the appropriate thing for a city to do. That is the role of a developer, not the city. And I stood alone on that. I voted no like 19 times on that. And those were four-to-ones. Those were tough votes to stand alone on that, but I did that. And, of course, we know today that that's not a very successful project, and we should not have played that role. So, sometimes, these things are necessary, and I think it's very important that we really look at council members, really look at their intentions. What do they want for the city of Redding? We have a great city, the quality of our people is second to none, and I believe I have proven on council that I can move this city forward and make sure that we have a balanced budget and make sure that we live within our means. Today, our pension obligations are over $350 million in unfunded liabilities, but we can fix that. We all know about crime, and there are some definite things that we're going to be moving forward to, to help that problem and to fix that problem. Crime is a chronic issue. So, once again, I have been very honored to serve these last seven and a half years. I look forward to your questions, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Brent Weaver.
So, I also want to thank you all for being here, taking time out of your schedule to come listen to us talk about our ideas and solutions for moving Redding forward. You know, this Cascade Theater, this has a lot of memories for me. I was born here. I remember when this was a movie theater, and my best friend and I, we would ride our bike down here. We'd go eat at Angelo's, and we'd come over here and see a movie. And one of the best afternoons of my life is when I walked out of here after watching Rocky III, and I saw Sylvester Stallone beat up and become the champion, and that's what I'm expecting to do here tonight. So, like a lot of people after high school, I went away to college. And during my college, I had an opportunity to serve a two-year church mission in Taiwan, had a chance to serve people who were less fortunate, and it opened up the world to me. I had an opportunity to learn Mandarin Chinese and become fluent in that. Between my sophomore and junior year, I had a chance to study abroad in Israel, in Jerusalem. And I share that only because those experiences at such a young time in my life, it really impressed upon me how much I appreciate my country, appreciate the community I grew up in, my family, my friends. So, after college, I went into the technology industry and worked there for roughly six years. Half of that time was in Utah, and half of that was in San Francisco. My wife and I, when we started our family, that's when we made one of the best decisions of our life, and that was to come back to Redding and raise our family here. We have four young children, two boys, two girls, ages three to 11. In fact, right before I came here tonight, I asked my daughter, my eight-year-old daughter, if she had any advice for me, and I do this before some of the debates. So, last Monday, her advice was to make sure I smile. And I don't know if I did a good job Monday, but tonight, she said, "Be nice." And I said, "Well, do you want me to smile?" She goes, "Yeah, be nice and smile." So, you guys let me know if I do good. So, why am I running? I'm running because I want to make this community safe for my children, I want to make this community safe for yours and your grandchildren. We are going to have to work together as a council to get there. And I think what I've seen, if anything's been impressed upon me over the past year is I've had the opportunity to walk through different neighborhoods and talk with people. There is so much positive energy, and it's now time to turn our attention, not focusing on the problems, but what these solutions are. And I am more confident than ever we can get there with the right council post-November 4th. So, I'm asking for your vote, and I look forward to this evening tonight, and you getting to know a little bit more about myself and these fellow candidates. Thank you.
Kristen Schrader.
Good evening. Welcome all. I'm glad you all decided to join us here. My name is Kristen Schrader, and I, the reason I'm running for City Council is I want to help make Redding be the best it can be. We are at a critically important time in our community, and we need to be forward-thinking and collaborate to build and support the best community in the Northern California. And I know we can do better. I can be, I have the skills and experience to be an effective City Council member and get things done. I also was born in Redding. I graduated from Enterprise High School and Chico State and the National Center for Paralegal Training. My husband, Jack, and I decided to move back to Redding, excuse me. I didn't move back to California before '94 and back to Redding before '94. So, in '94, my husband, Jack, and I decided to move back to Redding and raise our two children here, which is, as we talked about, we've all shared a lot, is a great decision to move back to Redding, and we want more families to move back to Redding and hope that their children also come back to Redding with jobs and a better economic situation. When I got back to Redding, I spent a lot of time working in our community to build a better community. One of the projects, several projects that I've worked on are here in our community, and I want to do more. My husband and I, in addition to working in the community, my husband and I formed and have built, for 28 years, a successful business, helping public schools design and fund construction projects and renovation projects all across the state. Locally, I have secured $70 million in school construction projects that have created jobs right here in the Redding area. In addition, I have worked, I have served for 16 years. Guess I'm a little nervous tonight. You think, after four or five forums? I have served 16 years, I'm proud to say, committed to the Shasta Union High School District and the students in our community. I have been, I'm currently the president of the Shasta Union High School District Board, and I have managed a $43 million budget, making sure to prioritize, to provide the funding and programs for our students, staff, and responsible to taxpayers. In addition, the community projects I talked about are far and wide. I have small projects and large projects. I've also been recognized by Assemblymember Dolly and State Senator Gaines for my work in the community, my public service. I too want to make Redding a better place, and I think we need to work hard together to get there. I look forward to your support this November.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan.
I'm Francie Sullivan, the Vice Mayor of the City of Redding, and I want to ask you all to go to my website, franciesullivan.com, if you're interested in my life story, or if you'd like to know about positions that we don't cover tonight, or if you want to ask me a question. And I want you to do that because I want to use my time to talk about something else. Last night, toward the end of our forum, we talked about whether things were better or worse now than they were four years ago. And we have huge, serious problems in our community. We all know about them, and we're going to talk about them tonight, and we're going to throw out ideas that we all have about solving them. But I think we also have a whole lot to be proud of and be happy about, and we've accomplished a lot. I think there are lots of things about our city that are better than they were four years ago. And I'd like to use as example A Turtle Bay East. And if there's one person in this room that hasn't driven to the very end of North Bichelli and gotten out and walked around and walked under the bridge, you've missed one of the things that will make you the proudest and feel the luckiest about living in Redding. It's breathtaking, and it was done with a collaborative effort, city staff, too many agencies to tell you about, but they do that all the time. They maximize services and money to give great things to our community. Another example is Henderson Open Space, which I see a lot of familiar faces in here that I know have worked on Henderson. But next month, they're going to have a huge disc golf tournament down there with a $1,000 prize down there, which before Dr. Smith was all BlackBerries and Arundo. And I run into people that still don't know, Henderson's being cleaned up. They've got a grant proposal in for a kayak launch down there. I also have an idea about something that I've been thinking about all day, and that is, it's September 12th, and this is a day when we all worked hard to bring our community and our country together, and as a result, we have a lot of veterans. The housing problem is a huge issue that we're all working on. I think we should pick out a small part and work on that. And I'd like to lead the group to work on veterans' housing. There are people working on that in our community now, but I'd like to lead the group to make sure that we're maximizing our effort, and perhaps we can use that as an example of how to expand our solutions. I'm Francie Sullivan. I want to see Redding be the best place to live, work, and raise a family, and I need your vote on November 4th to do that. Thank you.
And Michael DaCristo.
So, I guess they say they save the best for last. I don't know if that's true or not. My name is Brent Weaver, and I'm running for Redding City Council. Oh, I'm sorry. Oops. My name is Michael DaCristo, and I am running for City Council, obviously. I have a website, it's votedaCristo.com, and I always spell it, and usually I get it right. It's D-A-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O. So, let me just take a minute and tell you about me and my family and how we got to Redding. I went to Stanford undergrad and got a degree in economics. I went to USC Law School, lived in Southern California, made the best decision of my life, and met my wife, who's over there and comes to all these forums. We had two kids and decided we didn't want to raise them down in Southern California, so we moved to Redding in 1994, and it was the best decision we ever made. I took over a law practice. I also became a bankruptcy trustee shortly after that, and we've stayed here in town, raised our kids, sent them away to college. They actually got jobs, so they're off the family payroll, and they're both doing very well. The bad part is, they didn't come back to Redding. One lives in Austin, one lives in San Jose, and I wish there were opportunities for them to come back to Redding. I wish this campaign was just about jobs and about growth and about moving forward, because that's the most important thing, should be the most important thing, but it isn't. It's about the one other issue that we all know. We showed up at Chief Paletti's meeting, we show up here, we see it every day, and the issue is crime. And crime needs to have things taken care of. So, how do you know, why should you vote for me, and what do you look for in a good leader? You can look for people who've been on the council, and you can judge by what they have done or what they have not done, and make up your own mind. Someone who hasn't been on council, I think there's two important attributes that you need. The first one is you need someone with a vision. And what does vision mean? Vision means, where will the city be in three years, or five years, or 10 years? And if you make a decision today, what effect might that have in three years, or five years, or 10 years? Because we only move forward, we don't move backwards. And I have a vision for the city of Redding and a number of ideas that I'll bring up. The most important one, and it's a vision for crime, and I'll bring that up right now. The city had, as of its last audited financial statement, $12.5 million in unreserved funds in the general fund. That means they hadn't been designated for one thing. The city policy required they keep $3 to $3.5 million as a reserve. And using my economics degree from Stanford and a few fingers, I subtracted $3.5 million from $12.5 million, and that leaves $9 million. So, I wrote a letter to the paper a month or two ago and said, "Why don't we give Chief Paletti his wish, hire some community service officers, about $100 grand each, and take $1 million out of the reserve?" To date, the council hasn't done anything about it. You'll hear lots of discussion about it. It may not solve the problem, but it's a step forward, and it's something we can do today with the money. We don't have to worry about getting the money. We don't have to raise the taxes. There is money there, and that's just a small part of the reserve. So, I appreciate you coming tonight. I thank you for having me here. I enjoy the opportunity, and I welcome all your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have a couple favors to ask the audience. No clapping from now on, because it just takes away time that we have for questions and answers, if you all agree with that. I want to let you know that we have live feeds going at redding.com, and you can follow them at hashtag NorCalVotes. And again, thank you, and we'll announce when you will be able to see the videos that are being filmed by Shasta County Arts Council. First question, Mr. Jones. Are you for or against the tax which would give the police, fire department, and fire department more money?
Yes, in fact, I am opposed to this. You'll see my opposition in the ballot, and so you can read about it. The first thing that we needed to do, and we still have an opportunity to do it, is go through the city's general fund budget, department by department, and make some changes. We've done this before in the Great Recession. Before we go ask the public for more funds, let's look how we're doing today in each department. And I guarantee you this, each department can come up with 5% or 6%, and that can be redirected towards law enforcement, specifically hiring more officers right now. That would be the first thing to do. Taxing the public is your last thing that you do. There was no discussion whatsoever at looking at the budget, and because of that, the sales tax is the wrong approach. It essentially raises and increases the size of local government, and that I am firmly against. I believe in government, but I believe a limited role in government. We have a $300 million budget. We have the revenue. We have a spending problem. We do not have a revenue problem. Look at this problem, department by department, and we can hire more officers today. And that would be my plan, and that's why I'm opposing the sales tax.
Thank you. Brent.
So, this is a very difficult decision right now, and I think how you view problems and how you solve problems is definitely predicated on our life experiences and how we view the world. So, I'm a businessperson. I've started several businesses. I've been an entrepreneur, I've built projects down here. And I can tell you, before I've invested or started any one of my businesses or my projects, I have laid out a very clear business plan, so I know exactly how that money's going to be spent, and I know how much money I might need. And so, for that reason, I'm hesitant to get behind Measure F. It might turn out we need that money, but for me, as a businessperson, I want to make sure that we have a very clear, comprehensive strategic plan. And I think the role as a City Council, we are policymakers, we're not managers. So, it's our responsibility to make sure that we define what is a safe community. And then, I think we need to respectfully ask Kurt Starman and staff to go and work with law enforcement experts to create a tactical plan or a comprehensive strategic plan that will deal with our problems, our issues, and that will ultimately achieve that safe community that the City Council has laid out. And then, at that time, the City Council will talk about how we will fund it, and we will look at our current operating budget, our resource plan, and we'll decide if we can do it from there, or if we can relook at priorities. And one thing I've been very consistent on over the months is, I will take no options off the table on how we will fund this plan. The one thing that all of you guys have said loud and clear, and it was, the moment that it became clear, was Chief Paletti's last town hall meeting, when hundreds of people were there for standing room only, and hundreds of other people were turned away. We have hit critical mass, and that now is going to lead to action. So, if you think of Brent Weaver, we're going to define what the mission is, we're going to create the plan for that, to be successful with that mission, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Schrader.
I want to tell you that I'm supporting the Measure F, because I think all options now, currently, need to be on the table. It's such a critical issue for public safety, hiring more police officers. And would this be the best option in the whole, you know, looking at all the options? Maybe not. But at this time, supporting Measure F is one of the solutions to this problem, and it allows our community to weigh in. And if they also concur that this is an option to fund our police, then that's, then the will of the people will prevail. As far as spending reserves, I have serious doubts about sending, spending reserves until we evaluate all of the priorities we have in the city budget. For example, when the, I've worked for the last, served for the last 16 years as a school board member, reserves are really critical, really important to balance your budget, because you never know what needs you have, unexpected needs you have, and that's why you need reserves. And so, we borrowed, and we have taken away from programs to create those reserves. They don't just grow, they're, you have to make tough decisions to create the reserves. Spending one-time money on personnel costs is not really advisable for a city government or a school district, so I have serious concerns about spending reserves unless there's, and then, when you decide to spend reserves, if it's, if the City Council should consider that, then we need to prioritize what the needs are. So, basically, I support the tax, I want the community weigh in on how important that is for them, and we need to provide more public safety for both fire and police.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan.
I agree with Brent that we need a strategic plan. But in the meantime, while we're waiting to write that strategic plan, we don't have any money. And when the strategic plan is done, it's going to say, "You need to spend more money on the police department. You need to hire community service officers, you need to hire more police officers." And I'm going to stand, so you can all see how much this will cost you. I hope you can all recognize my quarter, Friend Judy Johnson loaned me, 25 cents. For every $100 that you purchase in taxable items, this is how much you will contribute toward having a safer city. That will generate $5 million a year, and over half of it will be paid by visitors to our city. All those lovely out-of-state cars at Costco, yippee, they can help us pay for a safer city. It works for them, too. We need to do this. We need to have a plan, but in the meantime, any plan is going to call for more money. Spending reserves, first of all, Mr. DaCristo's been told many times he has the number wrong. That's not how much is in the cash reserves. I think he knows that. We don't have money in reserves to spend on police, or we'd be spending it. We all live here. If there were a way we could have a safer city and have more police, it would have happened by now. We need to have more revenue. And if you can afford 25 cents on every $100 that you spend that's taxable income for police, please vote yes on Measure F.
Thank you. Michael DaCristo.
From a business perspective, increasing taxes is poor planning, because any business will look and say, "If it's one of the choices, why should I locate here if the tax is seven and three-quarters, and somewhere else it's seven and a half, or if it's eight here and seven and three-quarters somewhere else?" So, if you're in favor of business development and growth right away as a policy matter, you would be against raising taxes. And I'm against raising taxes, and I'll say it again. There's an audited financial report, and I'm, it's on the internet, I'm happy to show it to you. I spoke to Denise Maxwell, because I didn't want to write the letter and say you have reserves.
reserves when you don't. And Denise Maxwell, who's the director of finance, said, "Yes. The 12 and a half million dollars is in the general fund. It's in a category called unreserved," which means, nobody on the council has said, "We want to allocate this money for some specific item." That came out in January of last year, and AB 109 and the crime was in effect at the time. Nothing stopped anybody on the council, or the city manager, from saying, "Hey, why don't we allocate some of this money to pensions? Why don't we allocate some of this money to future payments? Why don't we allocate some of this money to the streets and the roads?" They never allocated it, they never did anything. That's a fair discussion as to what you want to allocate it for. But to say that it's not there, and that I know it's not there, is not accurate. It is not true. I'll be happy, I'll post a page on my website for what it is, and anybody can go take a look at it, and it shows that money is there. And you can make up your own minds as to what it is. She used a slightly different term. She said "cash reserves." And that's not what I used, and that's not what it says on the statement. So just listen to the words carefully and see what it is, but you don't need to raise taxes when you have $9 million there, and you can try and see what you get out of it.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
The most important thing we have to realize is that we don't need $5 million the very first day. It's going to take a while to hire people. It's quite a process to get people hired. Unless you can get somebody like an officer who's been retired and wants to come back and do some work, there's a background check, so on. So the good news is, we don't need it right now, but we need it. The last thing that you do is raise taxes. That's the government's first answer. I was appalled when the city council voted to give their upper management a 2% raise, and 10 minutes later said, "We need a sales tax for the police." No, that 2% raise should have gone to the police, and then we worked on it from there. Reserves, we've got to be very careful about that. If you go look at the history of our reserves over the last four years, they're dropping dramatically in the revenue that's coming in, in property taxes. In 2000, the year ending 2010, it was $34,000. Last year was $19,000. You would have thought it would be going up, but it's not. But we can find the money there. They find the money for everything else. When they want to do something, and we've got to watch out for our police department, too, because they're going to have added benefits, or added increases to their budget with the new building that they've got. Because now there's a mortgage on there, there's more electricity and things that are going on. So we've got to be very careful here, but you don't need the money right away, and you don't raise taxes. Taxes take away from your community. Money circulates two and a half times before it's gone. That's 12 and a half million dollars out of our community, and part of that would be sales tax actually going to the city. So the city's going to take from their sales tax revenue and turn around and put this money back in. You've got to be very careful how you handle sales tax increases. It can hurt you.
Thank you. Brent Weaver, the next question. What do you feel keeps Reading from attracting a younger population, and what would you do to improve Reading for its youth?
Improve Reading for its...
Youth.
I think, are we supposed to just get one?
One minute.
Well, this is a great question, because I went through this process with my wife when we decided to move back. But before I give that part of it, Reading is different. It's unique from other towns. We have Shasta College, we have Simpson, but we don't have a major state public university. We don't have an airport that has flights that are reliable and frequent. So we have certain things that are difficult for us, but we have incredible strengths. And I'll tell you why. My wife and I decided to come back. So when we lived in the Bay Area, I spent an hour, hour and a half commuting back and forth to work. I imagined five, six, seven years down the road, this type of a lifestyle, and would I be able to spend that quality time with my children? So we made that decision because of the lifestyle that Reading offers us as a family. And we had a question last night, how would we support the EDC or growth? And we have got to make sure we sell the lifestyle of Reading. We got to know who we are, what our strengths are, and play those up. It's like the In-N-Out model. Do nothing more, but focus on what your core attributes are, and we are an outdoor recreation mecca, and we have a lifestyle.
Thank you. Kristin? I can repeat that question. What do you feel keeps Reading from attracting a younger population, and what would you do to improve Reading for its youth?
That's a good question. I have a lot of experience working with youth. As I said, I'm on the school board, and I worked, I had volunteered a lot of time with our children's school projects and sports programs and things. It is a great place to have a family, and that's why we moved back. So I think what we need to do is focus partly on improving and maintaining our education. We have one of the best education systems in the North State. We have a really high graduation rate, but I think one of the things we can do to improve the situation for our youth is that we have better pathways for our students. So when we graduate from high school, they have been given the opportunity to focus on skills and training that might, or lead to, immediately to a job or to a certificated program. That would also bode well for businesses considering moving here or expanding. They would know we have great, very trained, excellent employees with our youth that are coming out of our high schools in this area.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
My age, everybody looks like the youth. I think we're doing a pretty good job. I mean, we just got an award as the fifth, as the city with the fifth-best trail system in the United States. We're getting a lot of notoriety around the country and around the world, for people to come here for recreation. You know, walk across the Cypress Bridge and look at the people down there fishing and kayaking. And we, you know, look at the people here, look at the people who are leading the revive effort on behalf of Turtle Bay. We have a lot of young people moving back here. We need to encourage them. What they care about is lifestyle. And the luxury I think young people have now, starting businesses, is that so many of them can be started anywhere. They don't have to go to the factory. They can create them in their own living room with their bunny slippers on. And we have a lot of bright, smart people who are coming back here, who were raised here. We have people moving here because of, because they can tell time. I think I'm over.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
The reason my kids didn't move back here is the lack of jobs. Once you get off mommy and daddy's payroll, whether it's at the end of high school or at the end of college, or sometime even later thereon, you need to go out in the real world and be a big boy or a big girl and get a job. And they don't come back because there are no jobs. So let me give you two examples, and it'll show you something I've done in the community that have led to jobs. The first is, the first year they had the Sundial Film Festival, they had it right here, and somehow they convinced me to be the emcee. So I had to stand up and talk in front of a room about probably less than the people that were here. That festival has now gone on to, it's 60-year, it's run by the Active 2030 Club. People have gotten jobs from it. We have filmmakers that come around, we have directors, we have all kinds of people. And Jeff Darling will tell you that we fill up the place here now. The gentleman running the screens back there will tell you the same thing. It's a perfect example. There's another example, and there's an angel group in town, an angel investor group. And we have started seeing small businesses who come to us for funding, and we've seen 50 to 100 different businesses. And these people don't care about the regulations in California, they want to move forward. And so those two areas are areas I've been involved in, and that will help move the economy and keep young people here.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
Mr. DeCristo beat me to the fact that we do have a strong youth program here, and if we didn't have the 2030 Club and we didn't have Catalyst, we would be in a much worse condition, because they've taken over businesses, and they are really proactive. I went out on the Take Back the Night and went to some of the parties that they were having up here on the west side of town, and what I found were young families buying houses. Because the silver lining to the dark cloud of the economy and the crash of our housing was that the houses now have gone down so far that young people can afford them, and they're buying those houses. So we do have this youth movement. How do we make it grow? Well, we start with the high tech, because that's what they're going to be doing. They're coming up here, we need to make sure that we have, you know, the high-tech capabilities up here. And right, they can do it from their home, but they also have a lot of empty buildings around here. When they go to start up a building, they've got lower rents, they've got less cost. So it's encouragement that they be allowed to start their business, start it quickly, and, you know, get their permits and all that, and get started when they want to.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
I was lucky when I was young. My father taught me a trade. When I went off to Sac State University, I had a good job because I had that trade. Jobs, jobs, jobs. That's what will keep our youth here. I was lucky enough, when I finished Sac State, to return to Reading and return to the family business. The city government doesn't create jobs. That's not our role. But we can certainly impede the progress of those jobs. For example, we turned down $168 million opportunity on the bluffs on Hempstead, a twin condominiums. $168 million worth of jobs, and the city turned that down 4 to 1. I stood there to dismay that we would be able to do that. Those are the types of things that the city should grasp a hold of and embrace. And we have had many opportunities like that, and we have failed to act upon them. Jobs in the private sector. The private sector knows how to create those jobs. It's our job as the city to say, "How can we help you become successful?" When we do that, and we have that culture change opportunity coming at City Hall, I think you will see an even greater city.
Thank you. The next question, Kristin, you're first. Besides public safety, what are the most urgent priorities for Reading?
I think we just all talked about it, and it's jobs and the economy. I know with the recent downturn in the economy, it's put pressure, and we've had less construction, and I think it's, some of it's turning around, but we also, we should consider finding incentives for construction in our community, working with our city building and planning department to make sure that it's user-friendly, that we have one-stop shop, we have consistent application of the rules. So I would, I'm saying that our next priority is jobs and the economy, and one of the ways to do it is to increase the opportunities for construction in our community.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
I think the homeless problem really takes precedent over everything. We have to find a better way of dealing with that. I think we're incredibly lucky that our police chief is very supportive of collaboration. He already has sent an officer to go out with social services, mental health, and other agencies to look at people who are homeless, to see if there are people out there that can be helped, and get them out of the canyons. We just have to work as an entire community. That's one of those things that is going to take every single one of us to help solve. We need to make our city less friendly to criminals. We need to stop handing out things to people that make them more comfortable to be homeless, and focusing on the agencies that actually help them change their lifestyle. So if you're feeling compassionate, give to those groups, like One Safe Place, which I'm on the board, the mission, those people that actually help people get back into a productive lifestyle, where they work and can contribute and feel good about themselves.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
I think it almost goes without saying, if you don't have a job, all other kinds of problems follow after that. If you have a job, you greatly reduce the other problems and your burden on society. So jobs is the number one. What other issues does the city face? Something about educational opportunities. The city doesn't fund education, it doesn't directly do it, but the nursing school at Shasta College is an example of vision and collaboration. That school is filled, it takes two years to get into it. They just opened one at Simpson. I hope they have the same success rate. We should be the nursing school capital of Northern California. That's an example of a vision that somebody should have. You get money from teaching, you get money from the school, and the people come out and they have jobs, and they can work anywhere, and maybe they'll stay here. The other one that's going to face the city in a little while, and it's important, is the Sacramento Riverfront. And there are issues with Turtle Bay, which I'm sure that we'll talk about, but there's also issues with other areas of Sacramento Riverfront, and certain leases and whatnot will come up in the future, and the city needs to be an active partner and participant in that, and see how those areas can be responsibly developed.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
Jobs and getting things done. Here's Viva Downtown Magazine, 2003. "We didn't get it done. We didn't get anywhere near done. We do not get things finished." The Riverfront Playhouse, they talked about doing it in 2003. We don't have it done yet. We have opportunities. The Oasis Shopping Center up there, that nobody seems to want. I want it. It's very, very important that we take the money off the highway as it drives by it, but you've got the company, Costco, that wants to build a bigger, bigger store, which means more property taxes for us, to fund some of the things that we need to do. We don't get things done. But if the city moved as quickly on those projects as they did on the police or the REU building on Airport Road, all of this would have been done. So when they want to move, they do. Right now, they're not moving on the things that aren't important to them. We need to make sure that they understand what's important to us.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
Thank you, Susan. Obviously, besides the economy, and the economy is showing some slight signs of improvement. But after seven and a half years on council, I can tell you that our unfunded liability and pension form, pension reform, is going to have to start happening very soon. We have a CalPERS and PARS issue, and we're going to start seeing cost escalations over the next 10 years at an unprecedented rate. And that will greatly affect our ability to staff the departments in the various, at the various areas of City Hall, mainly public safety. $360 million in unfunded liability, $130 million in post-retirement healthcare, unfunded liability, and over $300 million in sheer construction debt. And sooner or later, this is going to catch up with us. If you want to learn more about the Par scandal, Mike Warren's in the audience here today. That was a serious mistake that we made in 2004 and '05, and we're going to be paying for that for many years. It's a solvable problem, but you got to start today. And it's a, it's a big issue coming, and it'll affect the quality of our city.
Thank you. Brent Weaver?
So I've learned in business, I've bought, I've acquired different companies as I've grown my business. I'm very proud, you know, over the last 11 years, I've been able to take Weaver Lumber from seven employees to 40 during this recession, and it's taught me some very valuable things. If the head operates correctly, the body will follow. I think one of our biggest concerns, as far as what we're here today to talk about, is will we have a functioning council after November 4th? Because if we do, we can then begin the process of tackling some of these very, very big issues, from unfunded liabilities to how we get the economy going. What we just saw here with a personal attack on somebody, that is not how we get things done. We've got to work together, we've got to listen, and that is how we'll move forward.
Ms. Sullivan, you'll be the first one to answer this question. I think it touches on something that you started to talk about. What is your plan to address the issue of homelessness in our community?
Well, as I said, it's such a big issue, and we know that we can't solve it all at once. And that we also know that there's money available for veterans' housing, and certainly, is there, I guess if we're going to categorize people, is there a category of people that we all could agree, we all want to help, and we all maybe feel responsible for whatever problems they're facing that have made them be homeless? And so I want to make sure that we have all the agencies that are working on that specific issue, working collaboratively, working together. I want to lead that, and I think out of that, we may learn things that will help us branch out and work with other issues, or with other people. I'm not talking about starting a new organization. I would like the organizations that we have to be sure they're working as well with each other as they can be.
Mr. DeCristo?
People use the word homeless or homelessness, and I don't like it. And the reason I don't like it is that it means different things to different people. If you lose your house in foreclosure because you lose your job, you could be defined as homeless, but you may be able to rent a place. That's not usually what we're talking about. So I try to use what Chief Paletti uses, and I say, "Let's talk about that community in the following three terms: the wills, the won'ts, and the can'ts." The wills are the people in that community that will take help, and the help should be offered to them, and I think we have a number of areas that do that right now. The can'ts are the people that need help. And most of that help would be in the form of mental services, and that comes principally from federal funding that goes to the county, goes to the state, goes to the county, and they're responsible for that. The final category are the won'ts, and I think, maybe we don't all agree, but I think many of us agree, the won'ts should be gone. They should be out of here. We don't need those people like that. They're not good for our community, and they should go. And the principal way to do it, to start with, is more funding for the police.
Mr. Quinn?
We lump homeless, transients, criminals all into the same name. It's not. There are people out there living in the camps who are from Reading. Some of them are working. They can't afford a place to live. They somehow find a place to wash up. There are some out there who have lost their jobs from Reading. We need to go out there, and we need to find those people. We need to separate them. When they talk about putting an area for the homeless where you give them at least a decency of a roof over their head, they deserve that. We used to do that up at the National Guard. We used to have a bus that took them up there in the rain, and took them up there in the extreme heat, just to give them a decency of a roof over their head. There are some good people out there. So we go out there, and we find a nice place for them, and actually, putting them in one place is guarding them, because there's a lot of crime that goes on in those homeless camps. And then you take the ones that are mentally ill, and there's a facility that's going to be built. It can't be built fast enough, but we do need to separate them. And the rest of them, firing brimstone's a good answer.
Well, nobody knows the homeless and the transient issue more than the folks down here in downtown Reading, and it is a serious issue. And it has been growing each and every year. City of Reading, we fund a variety of different organizations that help the homeless and the needy. And my approach to this is that all of these groups have been very good and valuable groups to our community. We want to support those groups that have had a proven success rate with helping getting people that want help back on track. And not too long ago, I kind of coined the phrase, "Let's not feed the bears." And what I meant by that was, the indiscriminate feeding programs can attract people to our area. We have a warm climate, we have a river running through our town, we have some green areas, and so we want to minimize attracting, help those that we can help, and I think that would be the best approach. And there are various groups today that are looking and working hard on that, and, you know, in time, I think we'll do better. It is a serious issue, and it's affecting the quality of life, not only downtown, but all over town.
Mr. Weaver.
So this is a question of compassion, and having spent some time here with these six, I think all of us want to help those that truly need a hand up, that have fallen on hard times. I think most people we come in contact, it's part of the human condition, we want to help people. But what, the way I kind of look at it is, those who want help, we want to help you. There are certain nonprofits that are operating very, very responsibly in this area, and I want to encourage them, shine a light on them, so that the community knows which nonprofits are really helping in this area. But for those who are breaking the law, who are wreaking havoc on our community, both in our neighborhoods and our places of business, we have got to get very, very tough with them. Because one of the things I think about when I wake up each morning, if I'm going to do this job for you, is I want to protect those of you who get up and go to work and support your families, and you will have somebody that will fight for that. And we will make sure that we draw a very distinct line, that those who want to hand up will be there for you. But for those who are not going to follow the law and want to hand out, we don't want you.
Ms. Schrader.
Yes. I think we all recognize this is a serious issue, so much so that I went out with Jessica Delaney and Officer Ted Snyder and Leisha from Mental Health to visit the homeless camps, which are astonishingly very expansive, especially in the area by Mercy Canyon. They're a degradation to our environment, they're a concern for fire, and other things that are not welcome in our community. So I organized a forum and invited four panelists, including Chief Paletti, to talk about, what are some of the solutions? We need to be looking at solutions, and one way that we can do is look at all the existing community organizations. We want to help ensure that there's greater collaboration, looking at cost-benefit analysis, but also looking at other model communities that have been, have set up 10-year plans, and they're five years through their 10-year plan, like Salt Lake City or Denver, where they have made an impact in their community by focusing on what works, searching out for the gaps, and making sure we focus on what works.
Thank you. Well, Mr. DeCusto, we've managed to get all the way down to the end of the table, so now you'll be the first one to answer this question. Mr. Jones mentioned downtown, and we're in downtown tonight, so we would like to know, as far as downtown goes, what do you see as the greatest challenge for downtown Reading, and what is its greatest opportunity?
Can I pass? Downtown is the heart of Reading. Downtown has been the heart of Reading, and downtown should be the heart of Reading, and we are in the heart of Reading right now. What's its greatest challenge is to keep the heart beating, to keep it going forward, to keep it moving. The heart is different for different people. This is a lovely venue that we have right here. I'm supporting the Riverfront Playhouse, and I hope they get that built. I think that will help the community. We have restaurants down here. I think if you develop condominiums down here and get people to move down here, they will live here, they will spend their money here. That's what you need to go and do. If you've got the mall, so you could drive through it and not have to drive around it, I think that would be helpful for it. What's its greatest challenge, or what's its greatest opportunity? What was the other part of the question?
What's its greatest opportunity?
The people. The people who are here, the faces that are painted on the murals as you look outside, the ones who come here every day and work and say, "I'm going to help, I'm going to make it work, this is what I believe in." That's the greatest opportunity, and I want to continue to help that, and the city council can continue to help that.
Mr. Quinn, the question comes to you.
2003, finish the project. It's very simple. There was a plan. We stopped. We started doing a little bit with the promenade, we stopped. We need to get started again. We have a great opportunity. What nobody's thinking about is what's going to happen when that courthouse finally gets here, and we need to make sure that we push for that, because that is going to make this a business theater district. It's not going to be a shopping district. That was proven when the first people came through and told us how to make a downtown. They said you need six blocks of continuous walking and continuous shopping, with no stop signs. Stop signs are hotels, stop signs are gas stations, a real estate office, a medical office. That's what we needed, and we don't have that down here, so let's identify what we've got. If you've got that courthouse over here, and you've got those people here, just like any other city, Portland, all that, when people come out of their business offices, they'll go down to the restaurants, they'll go to the theaters, and that's what we need to define this as. And then move the shopping and things like that to along the Park Marina Drive, or some of those areas where you can have a continuous walking path with the shopping.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. The City of Reading has spent considerable time and money downtown because we value downtown. The greatest opportunity coming is the new courthouse. That's going to be a $180 million project. The city has done a lot of work to manage to buy a multitude of properties and make those available to the courts, and they have accepted that. The current courthouse will be the future Shasta County Sheriff's Department. That is a great opportunity. You're going to see a tremendous amount of activity in and around the courthouse, and I think you'll see a revitalized downtown because of that. It's critical that that courthouse stayed in Reading, and it was on behalf of the City of Reading, and our city manager, Kurt Starman, stepped up to make sure that they would stay in downtown Reading, and for that, he should be applauded.
Mr. Weaver.
So one of the great adventures of my life has been the last seven years, building projects downtown. So over on Shasta Market, we have my gateway building that has the Kobe Restaurant in there, has some apartments and offices on the second floor. And after I completed that project, a few years later, I did just behind the Cascade here on the Pine Street, it's called the Pine Street Lofts, and has 14 apartments, and then office and retail on the first floor. And I've learned something about spending this much time down here. One is great tacos down at Los Cortos. Over here, you can go see Kenny at lunchtime. But what I've learned, as far as one of our greatest opportunities down here, the more we can get people living downtown, they will be going to our restaurants, our coffee shops, the nightlife in the evenings, their friends will come in, and it will push out slowly some of those less desirable individuals. One of our challenges, I think one of our greatest challenges downtown that's impeding future development, is our seedy hotels and motels, and we need to use code enforcement as a tool to get them to clean up their act. Thank you.
Ms. Schrader.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest challenges we have, one of them, is downtown, is the parking garage. It is, at the end of its life, the lighting is poor, we have icy water dripping through, and we, the aesthetics is not pleasing, I think we all recognize that. One of the biggest opportunities we have is the parking garage. We have a great, we would have a great opportunity there to look at public-private partnership and develop that as prime real estate right downtown. It could be the driver for downtown revitalization. We're currently doing, city is beginning the process of a traffic study and also updating the specific plan for downtown. So what we need to do is look at and have a vision of implementing things that will make downtown vibrant, both for retail and residences. So I want to be at city council, and in four years, look back and see what we have accomplished for downtown.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. This is actually one of the reasons that I, one of the many reasons that I wanted to run again, because I see, as Kristen does, so many opportunities downtown, mainly the garage. I really can envision that with street-side commercial, with housing upstairs, with parking, wherever. I mean, I'm hoping there's a group of developers in our town that'll make the city an offer they can't refuse, to take that property in exchange for creating parking and creating housing. And specifically, I hope some of it's dedicated dust geysers, because I can see myself living downtown, walking to Colt 45 games, you know, drinking in the bars, being able to walk home, riding my bike. I can, I can see my husband coming with me, too. So I'm looking forward to that. I think it's going to happen, it's timely. The garage is obviously a great opportunity for undeveloped space downtown.
Thank you, candidates. It sounds like we've sort of touched on the issue of arts in the City of Reading, and art in public places, and how art can help with business in the City of Reading. Should the City of Reading support arts, and how can it? Mr. Quinn.
Absolutely, it could, and it should. Because each person out there, art is something different to them, and what we want is a lot of people come down here for a lot of reasons. And we have the Shasta County Arts Council right now. We have a great lady over there who's running it. And it was smart, because she also runs the one down in Chico. So here's a chance to put two people, you know, two jobs into one. You've got a person who's got, she's full of activity, she knows what she's going to do, she does something down there, and she brings it up here, she does it up here, and she brings it down there. It's a way to get people to move around downtown, and that's what we need. We need, the more people that move around down here, the less people are going to be out there that are the criminals. They don't want to be seen, they don't want to be around people. So we had the art hop, that went away, I think we need to bring that back. It's very important to get people out and moving around, but we need lights downtown. If you walk down here at night, it is dark. That brings out the cockroaches. We need the moths that are flying around up here. Light it, and people will come.
Mr. Jones.
I'm not a big art guy, personally, and so I'm going to be upfront and honest with you. I have very, a variety of different things that appeal to me, but art just simply isn't one of them. However, I recognize the importance in the City of Reading, and city has supported the Arts Council. The old City Hall, in fact, is subsidized for that. We have art in public places, and we participate in a lot of those things. Today, my most attention is turned to the unfunded liabilities and the seriousness of the amount of debt that the city has. And anything that takes away from that, obviously, I have to be very cautious with. It's my job, it's all of our jobs, if we're elected as city council members, to manage that budget. And number-one goals are things like public safety and getting more police officers out there, fixing your roads and the infrastructure. Those come very high, and lower on the list is art, to be honest. And so while we can support it, we have to do it in a limited fashion and live within our means.
Mr. Weaver.
So I grew up in a household with a mother who's an artist, and my aunt is an artist, and they both happened to be here tonight. I like art. One of the ways we can help support the arts without it coming out of our pockets or the city's general fund is voting yes on Measure B. So I grew up here, and the museum I had the opportunity to go to was Carter House Museum, and it was great. It was a small, little house that fit in the corner right there. Today, my children, my four young children, have the opportunity to go to Turtle Bay on a regular basis and see world-class exhibits. The same exhibits that when I go to Las Vegas or other parts of the nation that they have, and we can see those right here in Reading. Back when I was a child, the city was putting and supporting Carter House and all of that infrastructure, that campus. Today, the city gives zero to Turtle Bay, and all we are asking with Measure B is to allow them to solve their problems. We need to do that. Yes on Measure B.
Ms. Schrader, please hold your applause for the end. Thank you.
I think we can take care of some of the, the most important issues in our community, like public safety and the unfunded liability. At the same time, we focus on art. Art is such an important component in a community. Art can set our community, create, we can increase the creativity. We can have positive feelings about our community through art. I think we need more positive feelings about our community. I know we have some dire circumstances, but if we mix the two, and, but also focus on the ability of our community to feel good about themselves, and one of the ways they can do that is through art. Katrina did a great job with all the photos down. I walk down the street and I look, and I know some of the people who are up there, like Michelle, with her keys in her hand, which is just perfect. So we need to celebrate our community through art, and I think we'll be happier for that, and then people will want to move, more people will want to move here, because they'll know that our community has, is a good place to live, and one of that ways is through art.
Ms. Sullivan.
I was the second director of the Shasta County Arts Council, and I, I used to be able to just bore the socks off of people with the statistics on the economic advantage of the arts. I can't do that now, but boy, I'm really grateful Deborah Lucero was the Arts Council director. I will tell you that at the city, we aren't in a position to fund museums now, but thankfully, the McConnell Foundation keeps Turtle Bay open. And our city staff go to great lengths to do a lot with just part of their regular job. I think a lot of you have been to the art shows at City Hall. It is wonderful when the high school kids come for their art shows. Every three months, we change the art shows there. I think a lot of those kids would never even know there was a City Hall if they didn't come to see that. And the city staff are helpful with, my friends are here from Renaissance Reading, when we raised $85,000 to build art in the mall, the city staff knocked themselves out trying to help us to the extent that they could. So I think there are, you know, they help with every event in town to the extent that they can, and that is something we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you. Mr. DeCusto.
Thank you. My son went to school at UC Santa Cruz, and he studied film, and I said, "Why don't you study something and give you a job?" And he says, "I like art." So he moved out, and my wife took over his room, and guess what's in there now? Every kind of paint you could imagine, and everything she's painted. And I said, "Why don't you show it to people in the public?" And she says, "It's not good enough." Well, it is good enough, but it's art. This is art right here. The Sundial Film Festival is art. Turtle Bay is art. All of those things are important for the community. It's part of your vision, it's part of what you need. You can't live and breathe money only, you can't live and breathe your job only, you need other things in your life to keep you going that interest you. That's what makes us all different and all unique. I'm very much in favor of art. What can the city actually do? We can encourage it. I don't know that we have any money to support it. Turtle Bay and Measure B, you should vote yes on. They provide art of all kinds to the community. It's a wonderful attribute. It should go forward. That's one way that you can help. Thank you.
I ask the more technical questions, he asks the arty questions. So, how would you support initiatives to create more green space in town? And we are starting with, who are we starting with? Patrick Jones, I think.
All right. So we have, right now, we have a tremendous amount of green space in the City of Reading. And right now, in fact, we've been working in the Henderson Open Space area to clean that up. We've had a lot of camps and a lot of problems associated with that area. When you have a river that runs completely through your town, you're going to have a lot of green and open space. Now, it creates some issues for fire suppression and those things, it creates some issues of enforcement for illegal camping and those types of things, but we have a great opportunity along the river. And again, with the city, the finances that we have, we have to do these things in a partnership with the public. We have a lot of volunteers that step up and help us in these areas. And I think it's a highly underutilized area within the city, and I know the public can respond very well, and the private sector as well. I believe in time, the entire Park Marina area will be developed by the private sector to take advantage of the great opportunity along the river, and I see that, and I would encourage our participation in whatever I could do at the City of Reading.
Thank you. Brent Weaver.
So the project I think of that would have the greatest effect to transform Reading would be how we develop Park Marina, and over the next 10 years, as we start to see these leases begin to come up. One of the reasons why it is so critical over the next several elections is that we elect a board of directors or five city council members that have the ability to work together and have critical thinking skills. It's going to require pulling so many different groups and entities together to get Park Marina developed, to make sure we set aside appropriate green space for the public to come out, come down and enjoy, to bring the right mix of commerce and residential. If we can get this right, we, it's, I don't know if we're on 2.0 or 3.0 on Park Marina, all I know is the entire community wants to see something happen down there, and if And if we can do it and pull it off, it will transform Reading. And that starts with electing a council that can work together.
Thank you. Kristen Schrader?
I think we all recognize how important green space is and our, our trail system, all the parks that have been developed with partnerships between the city and developers, they have made substantial impact for our community, our families who can enjoy those parks. So those are important features in our community and we should support them as much as we can. And look for new, new alternatives, new sources of green space, which is, includes Henderson, which I traveled down with Kim Neemer, a director, to see. It's unbelievable, the, the space that's down there that is going to be developed, will be developed for the community as a green space. Also, I agree on, on Park Marina. What, what an amazing opportunity we have there. And having lived here, moved away and come back and realized in all those years, how much more we need to do down there on Park Marina, I am dedicated myself to, to work on a plan to develop Park Marina in a responsible way for the, for our citizens and for increased business opportunities.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
Certainly, Park Marina is the most visible and going to be the most important in terms of our city, but we have other opportunities also. As most of you know, we now have 200 miles of trails surrounding Reading. That is going to be one of our big economic drivers. It's already bringing all kinds of people to our town and some of them are staying and starting businesses. But we have some other opportunities. The city owns Oregon Gulch, which is another connector space. Those are spaces that are not really spaces that will be good to build houses on, but they're spaces that over the long haul, when times are better, we're going to be sure are preserved and available to the public. And I think, again, we need to be very grateful. We have city staff that think that way. They think to the future. They think about how our city will look 20 years from now. And that's, that is a good thing for all of us.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
I think the question was, how would you support initiatives for, for more green space? And that, I don't know if that means completely city initiative or if it means city, public, private initiatives. Randy Smith started through the Rotary Club, basically cleaning up, killing a rundo and cleaning up different areas in the town. And the little signs you see by the creek, that was a project that the Rotary Club did. So there's little things you can do. That has morphed into a huge project, which is Community Cleanup Day. And I think it's coming up October 4th, if I'm not mistaken, or October 6th. And probably many of you have participated in that. That's a perfect example of getting something done where the initiative comes from the private sector. They start on their own, it gets bigger and bigger, it then builds up, the public wants to get involved, the city gets involved, students from Bethel get involved, all kinds. It's a cross-section because we all are in favor of more green open spaces. I think that will just continue. I think it'll get bigger and bigger and bigger and it will grow upon itself. And the city should not get in its way and should continue to participate in the way that they do. They provide some help, they provide chippers, they provide other things that are necessary. And it's an excellent, excellent example
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
We have a lot of green space, we just don't know it because it's overgrown. It's not safe for people to go. So what we need to do is clean it up. It's a huge project. I would take the River Trail, which is a beautiful trail, but it's, it's overgrown. It's, it's overgrown very quickly. Why? Because it's near the water. It's, you have the blackberry bushes and all that. Let's do what they do on the coast. As you drive along the coast, you've got the groves and each one of those groves is sponsored by a company. If you gave each company a half a mile and said, this is yours and you get to put your sign out here and it's your responsibility to clean that up, we can keep it clean because it's not something the city can do. You can use the CCC, people, they love to come to work. And we need to just get started on those areas and keep them mowed down. Once they're down, you've got to keep doing it. It's a huge project because things grow so fast around here. But if we cleaned up all the green spaces around here, you'd be shocked at how many green belts there are up amongst all the west side subdivisions over on the east side, too. We've got a lot of it, we just don't know where it's at.
Thank you. Brent Weaver, you're first on this question. How would you work to improve air travel opportunities through the Reading Airport?
Well, I could leave Reading and go work for the airlines and try to convince the higher-ups to come here. I think we've done a very good job locally, improving the Reading Airport to make it more attractive for airlines. I think what the EDC has done to create the Travel Bank with the private funds that have gone in there, those are all positive steps to help attract. But one of the things that sometimes we have to do as city council persons is be honest that there are certain things we can control and certain things we can't. It's a private industry. They have, they have market forces they're dealing with that are probably national to them. And I think that's what we're seeing. What we hope will happen over the next few years is that industry will stabilize so that they can then invest back into some of the communities like Reading, Chico. And nobody wants to have it more than the business community.
Thank you. Kristen Schrader?
Well, air travel is obviously very important. I visited with Rod Dinger last Friday to get a tour of the almost completed renovation of the airport, which is a long time planning and, and the process. So they got, they received grant funding before they lost the airlines, that airline that they lost, reducing us down to one airline. But we need to stay focused and plan ahead as much as we can. I think EDC, working with our, our port director, is a good idea to focus on finding a way to meet with and solicit airlines to come back to Reading. So having an improved airport is a great investment for our community and we need to do things to support that effort at the city council.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
Well, I think we are lucky because this is one of those places where the private sector has really led the fight over this, if "fight" is the right word. But the Economic Development Corporation, many businesses in our community have pooled funds to guarantee an airline that they will purchase over a million dollars' worth of airline time from them if they, if they start flying in here. We also have the added, I think, good fortune to have IASCO and we all need to pray for their success because one of the things that we're told is keeping airlines from expanding right now is the lack of pilots. And IASCO trains pilots. Right now, for China Air, there was a lot of hope that they would be branching out soon into domestic pilots, but we all need to hope that that happens because that is part of the solution to airlines expanding. It's just part of it. But it would be a wonderful thing if Reading could be the place that trains pilots for the airlines in our country as well as in China.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
So I have a United credit card to get miles on it and with only three flights a day, it's a little tough to use the miles. What actually happens, and I've talked to Mark LaSalle about this with the EDC, and the EDC is an excellent, excellent thing that the city in large part does funding for. The practical problem with getting more airlines to come to town is dollars and cents. They look and they say, we only have so many planes. How much do we make on this route? How much do we make on this route? How much do we make on this route? And you have to convince them that if they come to Reading, they will make more money. They will do that. And that's why they started the Travel Bank, to say, well, this is what town, businesses in town have done. The Fly Shop does an incredible amount of people that fly in and out of here. Bethel Church, an incredible amount. So there is the need. It will help the business that they can do it, but there's a limit on what the city itself can do. Mark is working really hard on it. He keeps working on it. They haven't said no. They keep trying and I'm hopeful that it will succeed, but it may be a little bit like Stillwater Park. You need patience and patience will come along.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
It's all about the numbers. A plane has to come in here, they're all full. They've, the airlines have cut back. When you go to an airport, just flew to Colorado, just flew to Alaska, every single plane was full and there's 10 people waiting to get online. They have cut back their flights so they're all full. This is the problem with coming to Reading. They have to come in here, unload so many people, load so many people, they want to go to that next destination. They don't have the people that are getting, get off here and get on here that makes it feasible for them to land and to stop. They've got enough people that will go direct from here to there. So they just got rid of some of the flights out of Chico for the same reason we have here. Chico's got a university. Think of all the people down there that are flying in and out. It doesn't matter. It doesn't work for the airlines. We have to keep some pressure on them, but as you're going to look at, there's some small startup airlines that are trying to get going. We need to approach them. Don't go to United, don't go to Delta, don't go to the big ones. Let's start looking at some of the small commuter ones and see if we can't, you know, make a list of people from Edford to Fresno, Reading.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
I support both of our airports, not only Reading Municipal Airport, but Benton Airport as well. And that, that has provided some valuable services as well. The problem for Reading, as we all know, is that we're not a hub. We're a spoke and it's very difficult to get airlines to come here. Our airport director has worked very hard to try to secure the Los Angeles connection, a Denver, a Salt Lake connection. And the bottom line is the airlines want big amounts of money held in reserve, which is your, which is going to be out of the general fund and your tax dollars. It's been very difficult to attract them. And there's just simply other markets for these aircraft. There's a shortage on aircraft. And our airport manager has worked very hard to try, but it's a very difficult situation. And the Travel Bank will help and the public can do that. If they fly, they can put that money in that Travel Bank and that may, that may get some airlines to come here. But until we can afford to put a large amount up for them, it, we're going to have limited success. And right now, we really can't afford to do that, but I can support both of our airports.
Thank you. Kristen Schrader, first on the next question. What would you do to accomplish occupancy of Stillwater Business Park?
Well, we think, well, we, I think when we originally started with Stillwater Business Park, there were plans for how it would be developed and I, after the economy, you know, went down, there were a lot of, we needed to shift our attention, our focus on what kind of businesses can we find to be out at Stillwater. So I think that part of that needs to take place. I know they, the city has recently changed their broker and is working with, at a different partnership between the broker and the EDC. So they have, I think, a renewed focus on how to develop Stillwater. It's important that we, we look at all opportunities to develop Stillwater because it's a sizable investment the city has made. That if we're, it would be, I think, a poor choice if we were not to try to develop Stillwater because we need to improve on the investment that's made out there. So I hope that we can think of really creative solutions, looking at small businesses locally, entrepreneurs, the startup companies could find a way to be at Stillwater.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
This is another example of the private sector taking charge. The Economic Development Corporation took over the choosing of a new real estate firm to market Stillwater after several years with another agent who traveled all over the world during the worst economic times trying to get, get a manufacturer in here. Nobody was having much luck getting manufacturers anywhere. But now we have a new company. We already have received notice on the council that there are companies visiting here. There were companies a few weeks who met with the mayor and city staff and economic development to look up there. I think it's just a matter of time. Our, we have some of the lowest electric rates in the state. We have the highest reliability in the state. That is a huge, huge bonus for any business. We have water, not, not lots of water, but we have water compared to places where there is no water at all. We have much to sell here. And I think in my lifetime, I'm going to see some booming businesses at Stillwater.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
Thank you. Once again, the local startup companies are probably your, your fastest potential occupant or tenant for a lot in Stillwater. And the more that we can do to encourage those companies, give them incubator space somewhere, let them move forward, that will be likely or more likely to result in something for Stillwater. The EDC's done very well. I look at Stillwater and say, is the glass half-full or the glass half-empty? I think the glass is half-full. And if you're patient, the glass will be full someday. Anytime you get a company in there, and if you're patient, you have to be, it takes a long time, all revenue that's generated, ranging from the, the construction fee cost to any employees they hire, is all additional revenue for the city. It's all not in the budget right now and it will go a long way towards solving our problems. So it's the word that my kids hate, P-A-T-I-E-N-C-E. That means thank you. No, it's patience.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
Stillwater started with a fatal flaw, no railroad. You can't put a railroad to it. You'd have to have two bridges across the river and there's a hill on Airport Road. It's not very much that you go up to, it's a wall to a train. You can't go up by the Veterans Home. That little hill is a wall to a train. So we've limited what can be in there. The other thing is something we've grown recently. We used to be able to say we had the lowest electric rates. We've raised our rates 50%. Now we can say we're lower than PG&E. What do we do with something that's already been spent and already there? You give it away. You give it away. We don't have to sell it. Get somebody in there. You give it to somebody, they're going to come in. They have an incentive to come in. It's not doing us any good trying to sell it. We've tried and tried and tried. The money is spent. It's there. Give it away.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
So I voted no on Stillwater probably 18 times and I did not think it was the correct role of government to be a developer and, and these are the reasons why. $27 million still sitting idle today. But be that as it may, anyone that comes forward, we take them very seriously if they have an offer. We do have a policy today that the first lot is free and that could be even for the 92-acre lot, which is the prime lot at Stillwater. In this economy, in the state of California today, given the regulatory market, it's going to be very difficult. But we take in every offer seriously and there have been a few. And we meet with those folks and we sit down and we discuss what they're planning on. And typically, they're strong on good ideas and good intentions, but weak on capital. And that's usually, usually what happens and most of those, if not all of those, so far have faded away. But we take them seriously. Anyone that comes forward, we want it to be successful. We have a $27 million investment now and we would like to put somebody out there and create the jobs, which is what it was intended to do. It's just simply in this environment in California today, it would be very difficult.
Thank you. Brent Weaver?
As I think how I can play a role with Stillwater, I think it does no good for me to spend any time debating whether or not we should have done it because, quite frankly, I'm coming into it at a time when it's here. So how can I help? I think one of the ways I can help potentially on the city council is we've got to be positive. We've got to work with our partners, with EDC. I've, I've told Mark LaSalle, I would be happy to be a recruiter and go with him on trips. As somebody who has operated a business for the past 11 years here and who has grown it, I can help sell that story of the lifestyle and why I wanted to be an owner and, and live here and raise my family and why my employees love to live here and want to work for me. One of the great offerings we have in Reading is we have a reliable workforce. And what I mean by that is they're not transient. The ones who are here are typically here and their roots are deep. And employers are looking to go places where they can find a reliable workforce that will be committed to their company so that everyone can prosper. So I think we need to make sure and spend our energy on being positive about Stillwater.
Schrader? Thanks. Okay, so we've talked about one spot in specifically, so let's talk about industry and business in general. Should the city of Reading be encouraging businesses and corporations to locate in Reading and what can the city of Reading do to make that happen? Ms. Sullivan?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that we are. Again, our electric department actually works very hard meeting with people. When the Economic Development Corporation has contacts that come to our community, they always put together a team from our building department, our development department, the electric department, and they meet with people. They, the mayor goes, they do everything they can to welcome them, they do everything they can to tell them about our friendly business climate. I know there are people that think our, our city isn't, but I've been talking to businesses that have either built here or want to build here. And many of them think this is a great place to build relative to other cities. And again, we have much to offer. Driving people around our town, it makes it very hard for people not to fall in love not to fall in love and want to live here. And that, I think, is our biggest attribute and something to sell. And it's worked in the past. Companies that settled here in the past moved here because the owners wanted to live here.
Thank you. One of the ways to get businesses here is to have lower taxes, not higher taxes. So if you vote to raise the taxes, that's going to decrease businesses that want to come here. Another way businesses come here is the way anybody in a service area gets clients, you get it from other happy clients. If we have someone in town who's happy and runs a business, they'll tell their friends. They may tell their competitors. They may tell someone else, someone in their family. Hey, come here and do this. That's a good thing to do. We've talked about Mark LaSalle and the EDC. And I forget sometimes. I hate acronyms. EDC stands for Economic Development Corporation. We started this angel investor group. They need a place for incubators. Here's a specific idea. That's an area where they can collaborate together. When the city police department on California Street becomes vacant in a few months, offer it up to a developer with the condition that it be run as an incubator. See if someone takes it. Let someone from the private sector see. Maybe they'll pay, maybe they won't. But you've got to do something with the building. It's a way to encourage business.
Thank you, Mr. DeCristo. Mr. Quinn?
For any business, the key is opening up the door. If you go to Las Vegas and they've got those mega resorts, the contractor gets a million dollars a day for every day he opens it up prior to the date that it's supposed to. They know that when they get that door open, they start generating income, jobs, taxes. We need to promise them that they can get the doors open. How quickly can they get the permits done? How quickly can they get the inspections done? That is critical to a business. And if you don't do that, and you've got the reputation for doing that, people will not come. So we need to change that so that people can open up. Once again, when the city wanted to get a police building built, the walls go up. We need to do that for businesses too, as quickly as possible. And then when the businesses can start, we start generating property taxes, sales taxes, and employment within our community.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Quinn is correct. Today, what we have is a need for a change at City Hall with regards to how we do permitting. And we've talked about this for seven and a half years, but it simply has not been fixed. We have a company today, a developer today, that wants to do a project for veterans, housing for veterans. But because of the impact fees would be in excess of $1 million, he simply cannot do it. I've attempted to reduce the impact fees to encourage this type of growth and to streamline the permitting to move companies forward. That's simply a culture change at City Hall. And that is something that we can do as a council as we work together to solve these problems. And then we start putting people to work. And it's really, we're not putting them to work. They're putting themselves to work. They're spending their tax money, and they're building Redding. And we can help more in that in a variety of those areas. And one of those areas is reduction of impact fees.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, we should be recruiting companies to Redding. Today at my campaign rally, I shared that running for city council is a lot like dating. It's incredibly exhilarating and painful all at the same time. And I think recruiting companies to Redding is like dating. We need to know who we are, what our strengths are, and we need to play those up to those companies that are outside of Redding. I think one of the things that, if you're an outside company looking to invest in Redding, they're looking at, do we have adequate public safety? Is that a place that'll be conducive for customers to come and do business with us? I think they are looking at, what are the different fees? How does the building department work? And I think if we can bring that culture... I love having businesspeople run for government because they've been forced to sign the front of that check, and they know all of the responsibilities and the pressures that come with running a business. And I think I can add some very valuable insight up on that council and also assisting with the EDC in how we attract businesses or help local businesses who are already here expand.
Ms. Schrader?
Well, I agree, we need to help local businesses expand. And we obviously need to encourage companies from outside the area to want to build in Redding or locate in Redding. One of the ways, recently, the city council did was they updated their incentive policy, not just to apply to Stillwater, but to apply to the whole city area. So we need to focus our attention on what policies would best be influenced by or help influence companies to locate in Redding. And some of that would be obviously looking at our planning department and building department, make sure that it is user-friendly, and we have a consistent application of the policies there or the regulatory process. So encouraging businesses to come, also helping small businesses locate here, I mean, expand, I'm sorry, having local businesses expand here is very important for our economy. And I would encourage the city council to look at all opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. DeCristo, this question goes to you. Since we're talking about business and industry, let's talk about a specific industry: tourism. Should the city of Redding encourage tourism, and how should it do that?
Tourism is a very important business that we have here. You can tell, one source of revenue, not the biggest, but a big source of revenue is the transient occupancy tax. And that's the tax that you, when you stay in a hotel room and they say it's $99 a night, and you get your bill, it's $140. And you look at it and go, what's the extra $40? Part of that's transient occupancy tax and those kinds of things. So we should encourage that. We should encourage tourism. It will benefit the city. It will benefit the businesses. What can we do to encourage tourism? The biggest tourist attraction in Redding, by far, is the Sundial Bridge. The second biggest, after they go there and come down here, I think, is the Cascade Theater. Those two things should be supported. They should continue to be supported. The Sundial Bridge is related directly to Turtle Bay and to the McConnell Foundation. They should be supported as well. We get articles in the paper. People come here to see it. You can walk on that bridge anytime at night that you want to go see it. Almost 24/7, there's people on it. That's the biggest thing we can do to encourage tourism in this town.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
As a corporate controller for seven Crown Resorts, I had Bridge Bay, Digger Bay, and then Paradise Point down in the delta. Later went on, once I got all the controls and everything in place to manage Bridge Bay, I can tell you about tourism, and I can tell you how it affects Redding. When the people are driving up the road, they fill their boats up with food here. And we put in a policy where they could order the food, and we'd have one of the stores deliver it so we could put it on their boats. They didn't have to do that. That's why you want Oasis out there. Now, the first thing I do is get some water in the lake. And we're not guaranteed anything there. But what we did out there was we advertised the things that were going on in Redding to 25,000 people who are out there on the lake on those houseboats. They want something to do. They waterski the first day. They're tired. Their kids are running around the boat. They want them to do something. Fourth of July, we had them go down to the fireworks. There were buses that were arranged to take them down there. That lake can feed Redding, the tourism. Because if you come to Redding, and I've been all over the country, it's not the place to spend a week.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Jones?
The city of Redding spends roughly around $3.25 million to essentially market Redding and market the natural beauty that we have. We are very fortunate that we have a river that runs through the center of our town. But we also have Lake Shasta, we have Whiskey Town, and we have 3 million acres of national forest and BLM lands surrounding us as well. So besides waterskiing and jet skiing, the River Trail, our river, fishing, a variety of different things, and it's simply a marketing plan. And that's where most of our money today goes. And we can play to our strengths. And the strengths there are the natural beauties. The river, to me, is one of the finest rivers you're going to ever find, and it flows right through our city. It's a tremendous asset that we have. And play to that. And we do spend around $3.25 million doing that each year. And I think it's successful, and I think it's money well-spent to bring people to Redding for the natural beauty.
Mr. Weaver?
So I think it's really interesting how, I've said this over several forums, it's our life experiences. It's where we might have gone to school, or where we grew up, or if we're a transplant. And it's that lens we use in how we look at issues or problems or opportunities. And I want to apologize to all the baby boomers out there, for my generation, Generation X. We don't like to follow rules. We don't believe in walls that we can't get over. Technology has taught us that we can live here in Redding and work on the other side of the world, or work in San Francisco. My generation is much more concerned about being happy right now. And I love my father so much, but he worked his whole life, and then he started really enjoying himself after retirement. I think that's great. He raised a wonderful family, with exception of me. But my generation, we want our cake, and we want to eat it, and we want it right now. The outdoor race industry, whether it's marathons, half-marathons, swimming races, triathlons, it's a multi-billion-dollar industry. And it goes back to, we need to play to our strengths.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schrader?
Well, I know Redding has always relied on tourism industry. When I worked for my father's gas station that was on I-5, at that time, there wasn't as much to keep our tourists here. It was like they stopped, I helped them get gas, and they were like, I want to get the heck out of here during the summer because it was so hot. And you always meet other people who have visited Redding, and they always remember the heat. One of the great things that has happened in the last 10 years now has been we've developed some of our assets, like the Aquatic Center. Now we have a lot more swim meets coming to Redding because we have a wonderful opportunity for them to enjoy and bring their money and visitors to stay in the hotels. Sundial Bridge, you could be across the country, and people will say, where are you from? Redding. Oh, you have the bridge. So we can do better. We can expand those opportunities. The city of Redding needs to invest in marketing for tourism because it is an economic generator for our community.
Ms. Sullivan?
Well, a few years ago, the city had their own tourism center. You know, I certainly used to go down by the civic auditorium and get maps when we had company coming. But as part of the budget cutting, that was contracted out with Bob Warren at the time. Now, a wonderful woman named Lori Baker is running it. And she spends every waking hour going all over the world in all manner with the computers and in person, selling Redding. And if you want a treat, look at Visit Redding. Our own Deborah Lucero in the back of the room sells Redding with things like the silent movie festival. I have friends coming from San Francisco to see our Charlie Chaplin movies, which are from Hat Creek. You know, we have a lot of people selling us. And I think one of our huge problems here is that we all take this for granted. And we don't always see how many things we have and what a treat they are for visitors. And it's good to have people come and tell us that. And it's also a huge part of our economy.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, this question's going to go to you first. So we're going to stick with this idea of business. So let's talk about the businesses that are currently in the city of Redding. So what sort of infrastructure can the city develop or support that helps encourage and further develop businesses that are already in our community?
We constantly talk about recruitment, recruitment, find other people. What about retention? How many businesses do we lose because we don't pay attention to them? That is a key, once you get somebody in the door, that you continue to pay attention. And we lose a lot of businesses. I can go down a list of businesses that were here when I came here, and they're all gone. Why? Did we not pay attention to them? What did we do? Some of them were sold to major corporations, and of course, they would move them away. But other people left. Was it our fault? It's something that we need to really pay attention to. Once they're here, what do we do to retain them? It's just as important as recruiting. In fact, it's easier than recruiting because they're already here. You can talk to them here. You're not having to have them come in here and give them a plan to build a building. So retention, and somebody's got to be paying attention to that. Is that the city's job? I don't know. But we need to have some group that we put together that goes out, and EDC can spend as much time retaining as they do going out and recruiting.
Mr. Jones?
John, could you read that question again, please?
Yeah. What sort of infrastructure can the city develop or support that encourages and helps businesses that are currently here develop?
Well, realistically, I think, when you take a look at Redding and our road system and the infrastructure within that, right now, today, we're roughly around $40 million behind on infrastructure repair. And that does have an effect on the businesses that we have here today. So as you can see, besides our pension liabilities, the roads, and the variety of utility issues that we have, there are some sizable amounts of money that will need to be necessary. I would like to be able to, as we improve in our budget, be able to set aside more funds, something in the tune of $5, $6 million a year for repair of infrastructure in the city of Redding today. And downtown is a great example of failing infrastructure. Just take a look at our network of roads. And while that will help some businesses retain, it's simply something that we owe the public to have infrastructure that's kept up and current. Every year that we fail to maintain our basic backlog of repairs costs even more.
Mr. Weaver?
So switching my hat from city council candidate to business owner, what would help me the most right now is an adequate level of public safety. So running my lumberyard, I've been broken into four times over the last two years with my buildings downtown. It's probably not a month, month and a half that goes by when I don't get a phone call that one of my tenants' cars has been broken into. So it would help me with my businesses if we focused and worked together to get an adequate level of public safety. After college, when I worked in the technology industry, I worked as a business analyst. And what my responsibilities were was to look at operations and look at how we can improve efficiencies or take some of those things that were costing the company too much money, and how could we relook at it to make sure it gets within our budget. And I think that's something that not only we as business owners do, but it's something that we should be doing in local government as well. You should always have that desire and that ambition to improve upon when you took it over. So keep working.
Ms. Schrader?
Well, I too want to interpret infrastructure. And the answer to the question is, the important need we have to maintain our current infrastructure, we are behind in maintaining our streets. We have to pay attention to our water, the pipes, our treatment facilities so that we can maintain the level of services for our existing community members. And so the other businesses looking to locate here would know that they would be served well. We have great utility rates. We have the best maintenance that we can get. But we need to maintain that through hiring staff to make sure that we stay up on our utilities and make sure we have our streets taken care of so that businesses can look here and say, this is a place I want to locate. And our families will also be protected. Also, through public safety is another infrastructure need we have.
Ms. Sullivan?
I was on the board of supervisors for a while. And one of the things that I actually initiated was doing a survey of employers in our community and asking them, what would it take to get you to hire one more person? That might be something that city council, when we are working together next year, takes on, to do a survey of businesses here. Right now, as liaison a couple of years ago to our electric department, I can tell you that they meet on a regular basis with businesspeople in the community and talk about what they can do better. And the thing that was always real impressive to me was how many of those people talked about how important the fact that we have the highest reliability in the state of California was to their businesses. Especially now with electronics and technology and things, the fact that our power so rarely goes off is huge. The fact that our rates are fourth or fifth lowest in the state is a good asset. And those are things that are good for businesses that are here. I've heard of businesses who were thinking about moving other places and looked at utilities and decided Redding was a pretty good place to be.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. DeCristo?
Thank you. Infrastructure for a current business is a very difficult situation when you only have so much money. Government takes in money, and it spends money, and it seems like there's always more to spend it on than you have in your pocket to do. One example of vision, and it hasn't been mentioned yet, is that I think broadband is important. It fits into the technology. It fits into what the growing area is. It fits into what Mr. Weaver said about the Generation X who likes to work from here and have the business over there. And that's an important thing. And I think that the city should look at ways that it can encourage. I don't think it should build it on its own, but to encourage that type of investment in the community. I think broadband would be important. As far as the other infrastructure, it seems like what happens is you wait till the water main breaks, and then you go fix it. And unfortunately, with as little money as we have, that's, as a practical matter, what we're stuck with. It would be nice to be more proactive. It just costs more money. And where's the money going to come from? I guess if I'm elected, that's one of the difficult decisions I'll have to make. But I'm sure I can reach one with the other council members.
Thank you. Patrick Jones. What are your plans, if any, on alternative transportation initiatives and making Redding less car-centric and more pedestrian and bike-friendly?
Well, this is a very tough question. Redding is 62 square miles. We're a fairly spread-out city, and it creates great issues for us with infrastructure and public transit. I'm always in favor of, when we are building a new road, to make it accessible to all types of transportation. So that's cars and bicycles, and pedestrians as well. It is very costly if we have to go back to existing roads and change them to acquire more ability or have more access for different types of transportation needs. So this isn't an easy problem. And it is a problem that Redding is not alone in, in many California cities. And we're doing the best that we can. It's a subject that, it does take money. It absolutely takes money. And over time, I think we can move slowly in these areas and make some improvements. The city of Redding has done a fairly well job in that area. But we do have a lot of other issues that are quite important, too.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
So I have approximately high 30s in the number of apartments in my buildings downtown. And it's a very high percentage of younger people that live in those apartments. And I think there's several draws for why they want to be downtown. One is they want to have that community down here. It's a very eclectic group of individuals down here from businesses. And they have told me, they love that they are not in their car. Now, I'm not faulting anyone who wants to be in their car and drive around. I think that's great. I love my car. But for those people who want that option, to be able to live in an area where they can walk to work, or they can walk to the restaurant or the coffee shop in the morning, there's absolutely a need for it. The younger generation that I come from, they want to spend more time talking with people and less time in their car driving. people and less time in their car driving. So I think that one of the great things we can do in downtown is we need more mixed-use projects, like what I've done over the last seven years, so we can get more people living close together and working and talking and having fun.
Thank you. Kristin Schrader?
Well, recently, if you, many of you have driven downtown, you've seen all the new pavement and the new striping, which is an example of how we've changed how we can transport people downtown. So it's going to be bike-friendly, it's going to be pedestrian-friendly, and I think we can also recognize that the rate of speed that we travel through town will be less, and that would give opportunities for growth in our downtown area. I think we should look at that as an example for future projects. I think there was a lot of collaboration and effort to make that project happen. I'm excited to see what other areas we can address with that same kind of treatment, so that we look at alternatives, which includes pedestrian safety and bicycles.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
A few years ago, the city council, once a year, we set priorities. And we chose as our priorities, complete streets. It's also the law in California now. Streets are no longer just for cars, they're for moving people. And because of that, you will see all over town, as street maintenance is done, as streets are expanded, that they're designed for cars, and they're also designed with pedestrian and bicycle paths on the side. A huge advantage for developers and people paying impact fees is that those are less expensive to build, and they're less expensive to maintain. Obviously, bikes do a lot less damage to pavement than trucks and cars. It also means that maybe we'll be just slowed down a tiny bit. Having two lanes downtown instead of three might slow us down a little bit, which I think a lot of merchants down here are cheering about. So we're doing that, we're expanding it all over the city. I can't wait for it to get safer, for me to ride my bike around town, and we know that's what's been missing, and it's getting better.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
Again, from a business perspective, if you want people to stop driving their cars, you've got to charge about $12 a gallon for gas, and they'll drive it a lot less and find another mode of transportation. We've slowly, and the city can't affect that, we've slowly watched gas prices go up, and there's still just as many people driving. Having said that, bicycles are great. You want to ride a bicycle? I think it's a good idea. As I understand, the projects where they just repaved the streets and restriped it, much of that, I think, was state money, not city money, and it came from there. But the city participated, said, we want to have these bicycle lanes on there. I think that's a good idea. So to the extent the city can encourage it, I would be in favor of it. But as a practical matter, what can the city do on its own and add those extra lanes? I mean, if you live in a subdivision, I don't think you need to put a special bike lane in there. The traffic's not high enough, and the people on the bikes should watch where they're going. But I would be in favor of encouraging it to the extent we can.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
It's going to take a lot to get us out of our cars, because this city, 62 square miles, is not like a city of 62 square miles in LA where it's all laid out in a grid. It's very hard to get across the bridges to get where you want to go. And if you do anything, if you're in sales or you have to go to meetings and things like that, the bus just doesn't get you close enough to where you're being picked up or where you're being put off. So what do we do? We recognize what's going on right now in the communities, and that is, there are people starting with electric cars. Do we have certain places where they would come downtown and be able to plug in? That's something that we need to look at. So we address the subject of what things are turning to. It's not going to turn around completely. We need to light our streets. If someone's going to ride their bike to work, well, that's fine in the summer, but as the days start to get shorter, they need to have well-lit streets. We don't have those. So that's going to encourage people to start thinking about alternatives, and also the safety. People have to get used to having bicycles on the street. We can also take Market Street, and Caltrans really made a mess in town for the vendors, because...
Thank you. Brent Weaver, you're first on this one. As a city council member, what would you do to expedite the Costco building on Oasis Road? What's your opinion on that? And this project has been in the process, of course, for eight years.
Well, there's a natural process that has to go through. As somebody who's built several projects over the last 10 years, the first thing you do when you come to the city of Reading is you go through the planning department, and you make sure that the use, that what you want to do for your building is appropriate for the zoning on that parcel. So that's taken place. And now where we're at is, we're talking about the infrastructure improvements for them to get off at Oasis, and that's really what's held it up for quite a while. Who's going to pay for those infrastructure improvements? I think the best thing we can do as a city council, somebody from my standpoint or background in building, is to sit down with Levinson and try to understand, you know, what are his issues? There's going to be, you know, I think sometimes, especially with the building department, it's very anecdotal. It's very, very easy to pile on and say, all of the problems we have with development are because of that dang building department. But sometimes, you've got, we have to realize as developers and builders that we need to give the information that the city or the building department is asking for. So there needs to be balance there on that issue.
Thank you. Kristin Schrader?
Well, I think the city has worked well with development at the Oasis area. They have worked to expand the interchange there. One of the things that I've experienced through my work with public schools is, for the last 28 years, we have helped school districts build schools, and that goes through a state process. It's a very bureaucratic process. There's four state agencies that are involved in building schools. There's many layers of the approval process. For Oasis, one of the things I understand that's currently going on right now is, the developer needs to resolve and work with the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's not just the city. It's beyond the city, and so they are needing to, right now, come up with the plans and the needed responses to get their project completely approved. And a lot of it's left right now with the Army Corps of Engineers. I think the city has been helpful. I think they've worked well with the developer. They have a shared, you know, the plan for continued access to that area. So some of the things are outside of the control of the city, but I think in the areas that are, they've done well.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
We get regular updates on the Costco sale, and I can tell you, the thing that has slowed down the Costco sale has been discussion between Costco and the owner of the property, and the decisions that they had to make in their private sales transaction, which was not something the city controls, nor necessarily should be advising on. It also is a huge project, and there are many agencies. As Kristin pointed out, the Army Corps of Engineers, there's waterways up there, there are bridges that have to be built, there are secondary access. There also is a major PG&E gas line that goes through the middle of that, and that is going to have to be moved. We just got an update that said that probably is going to take over a year. That is not something the city has any control over. There also are going to have to be even more freeway improvements made. That is also something that the city negotiates and helps with, but we don't control that. So Costco is moving along, Costco's not complaining.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo?
It's the old patience word again, unfortunately. I do think, from what I've seen, excuse me, on the outside, that the city is doing the best that it can to try to get the project to move forward, and I think it's a good project to move forward. I do see on occasion, on some of the city council notes, closed sessions, and there are indications about lawsuits. And I see Mr. Levinson's name on a lawsuit. I don't know if the city's party to that, or if they're just a real party or a small party. So I think there may be some facts going on and some things going on that are not privy to members of the public. I do also think, by the nature of the question, if the city was a little more, if more information was made available about the status, to the extent you can make it available, and that people could see that, they would be maybe a little more understanding about why it's taking so long. It sure does seem like it's taken a long time, but as Ms. Sullivan said, there's a lot of agencies besides the city that the city can't control how fast they move or how fast they make their decisions.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
Eight years is a death kill to something like this, because it's not just one business you're talking about, not just Costco. There's a number of businesses that are involved in this. And if they see you staggering along and stopping and not getting anything done, they're going to move on to the next city. These businesses are in the business of making business, and the only way they do that is getting their doors open. And they're seeing eight years, eight years is ridiculous. If it had this many stops, then they should have stopped from the beginning. And I've talked with Mr. Levinson, and I've asked him for some of the information on it. This should have been done. If people wanted it done bad enough, we could have forced some of these issues. We need to get these things, these projects, done. They need to get doors open. You're losing opportunities. These big companies are not going to look at Reading if they know that you are holding up anything at all. I've heard there's things as ridiculous as they want eight lanes on a bridge going across the freeway. That's ridiculous, can't be done, not by somebody who's developing. They'll never make any money. You have to be within reason of it, and you have to want to, and you have to push those other agencies.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
I've taken a personal interest in this over the last eight years, simply because it's the potential of 3 million square feet that's inside the city of Reading on I-5. It's our last I-5 frontage, and it has tremendous value to us. The type of businesses that have been calling Reading that would like to be there are businesses that are, many have not ever been in this area before, and they would pull a tremendous amount of dollars off of I-5 and help the city of Reading. The Oasis Road Town Center is one of the projects, Costco is another project, and there are many other landowners involved as well. It's not just one. It's how effectively can they work with the city of Reading? And we're not talking about eight years, we're talking about 20 years. This project has gone on a long time. And it's about time that we streamline these processes. We are very fortunate here to have a few of these landowners that have been extremely patient and have had a considerable amount of time and capital to invest in this project. Otherwise, it would not be as far along today as it is, and so we're fortunate there.
Thank you. Kristin Schrader, question for you. Do you feel that the sale price of $600,000 is appropriate for the Turtle Bay project? Do you support or oppose Measure B and why?
I am very proud to be supporting Measure B and the sale of the property to McConnell. It is a tremendous opportunity for our community. Not only will it provide $600,000 to the city of Reading and their budget, it also will provide 40 construction jobs, and some of the, 25% of those are union workers. It also provides 70 construction jobs, excuse me, 70 permanent jobs going forward. In addition, it's estimated there are $700,000 in increased tax revenue that would come to the city of Reading annually from increased property taxes, sales tax, and TOT tax. That's not there available now because it's a parking lot. So I think we need to improve, help Turtle Bay become the best it can be. I think it's an economic driver for our community, not just those jobs, but it'll increase the tourism to our community, it will bring more sales tax money, as I said. So it's definitely an economic win for our community.
Thank you. Francie Sullivan?
I obviously think it's a good deal. I maybe gave up a lot to vote for that. I think this is a really important asset for our community, and this was the only offer that we had to solve the problem of funding for Turtle Bay. The trade unions have been big supporters of mine, I consider many of them friends, and they told me that if I voted for this deal, they would make sure I didn't get re-elected to the city council. And they're very talented at campaigning. I took them at their word. But this was the right decision for the community, and I promised you, and I promised myself, I would always make my votes count for the best interests of the city. So I've read every document, I read every estimate, I read every appraisal. It is a parking lot with an 88-year lease, and I think the price was a fair price, or I wouldn't have supported it.
Thank you. Michael DeCristo? Quiet, please.
When we moved to town in 1994, the city ran Carter House and the art museum. And shortly after that, they came together as Turtle Bay, and it probably had a 95% approval rating in the community, and it was wonderful. And we said, we made a good decision to move here. Fast forward 20 years, we have divisiveness in the community, and that's not good. And it's come about for a variety of reasons. It doesn't do any good to rehash those reasons, but you see it here, and you have the divisiveness. The voters got the ballot measure on, they're entitled to vote. A continuing sad part is, after the vote comes through, there will still be divisiveness, and that's not good. Having said that, I actively support Turtle Bay, I actively support the land sale, I think it needs to go through. If somebody wants to make a higher offer, they can make a higher offer. Nobody has come forward to do that. Nobody stops you from doing that. When you sell land with an 88-year lease on it, and the lease has been paid upfront, which it was, by making the improvements, nobody's going to buy it because there's no cash flow, there's nothing in it. So the price is more than generous, and I support it.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
I have extensive experience in a number of these areas, and I spent three and a half hours going through, and I'm separating this into two areas. Is the hotel viable? I was in the hotel industry, we bought and sold, we were on leased property out there at the lake. So I know what happens here. And I went through, and it's reasonableness, the test does pass. They've got people who, you know, experts in the field, they've done their studies. Is it going to make money? Hopefully, there's enough money there. Now we get over to the land deal, totally separate issue. We have, if we vote for it, we'll have another lawsuit. How long is it going to take? We need some mediator to get in here and get this thing settled, so it gets done. It's important that we don't stop things because of this. It's just going to take more time, no matter what happens. If somebody's sworn in to the city council in December, they're going to inherit the lawsuit if it passes. What do we do then? Just keep stopping? Let's get a mediator.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
I supported the five acres, the hospitality parcel. That hotel could have been built over two years ago. It frustrates me that we have a situation here between McConnell Foundation, Turtle Bay, and the city of Reading, and I'm having to be indemnified by a third party. That risks taxpayers' dollars, and that's my job, is to make sure you're protected. This is a situation between a union and McConnell Foundation, and it should not be affecting the bottom line for the taxpayers in it. It is. And I don't like being involved, I don't like being in that position. This is about more than just the five acres. They could have built the hotel more than two years ago. This is something bigger, about a bigger piece of land of an unknown nature, and that land was deeded open space, so it was even difficult for me to approve the five acres for a commercial venture. But we did that, we did that. But I do not like being indemnified by a third party. It's fundamentally wrong, and ultimately is going to cost the taxpayers more money. This needs to be solved between the two parties, not the city of Reading.
Thank you. Brent Weaver?
So the question was, am I comfortable with the sale of the land and the valuation of that land? So just a block over here, as the crow flies, I built my most recent project, the Pine Street Lofts. And the first thing I did, before I went to the bank and designed a building and got a loan for that building, I had an appraiser come in to value that land. And they looked at other properties in downtown, and that appraiser, you know, whose license came up with a valuation for it that the bank and I both agreed to. That is separate from what might be built on that building and how that might cash flow. So again, back to this. So if it's me, as an investor, as a developer, I've done projects like this, if somebody came to me and offered me that property over there for nothing, there is no way I would even want to take that property for nothing if I knew there was an 88-year encumbrance on there. It just makes no sense from a business standpoint. So I'm very, very comfortable on that lease as it stands, that that's a fair valuation. In fact, I think it might be a little bit high.
Thank you. You know, we're going to shift gears now, and basically, we're going to ask each of you, if you can describe a time when you changed your mind about something after you gained new information. Ms. Sullivan, we're going to start with you.
Gee, we'll continue with Turtle Bay, because I have to tell you, when this first came up, I couldn't imagine that I would support selling one square inch of city of Reading land. I think we have just the most amazing resource there. And I spent a lot of time, as I say, making people drag all the paperwork out of the attic and reading every single document until I was completely convinced that, one, this was not a prevailing wage job, and, two, this was a generous offer to keep a great city asset available for all of us and for people who want to visit our city.
Mr. DeCristo?
I don't have a specific time or specific event that comes to mind right now, but I can tell you in general, when I grew up, I grew up in a family that was very Democratic, and they were Democrats irrespective, and they loved the letter D. And the letter R was not allowed in our house. And I went to college, and I went to Stanford, and man, that's what you get. It's the government, it's everything else, it's all perfect. Then I got out in the real world, and I got a job. And I worked for myself. And all of a sudden, one day, somebody said, are you paying estimated taxes? And I said, what's that? And they said, well, you got to pay the government. How do you pay them? Well, you got to pay them this, and you got to pay them that. And one of the things that came up was, instead of the 7.5% or whatever it was back then that the employees pay, because I worked for myself, I had to pay extra, I had to pay both sides of that. And I said, hmm, is that really what the government should be doing? Is that really encouraging me as a business? And over time, I slowly changed my view and decided that maybe government doesn't always know what's best for people, maybe people know what's best for people, and government should stay to what it has to provide and not try to be in everything.
Mr. Quinn?
That's the first time we've had this question. When I got out of the United States Air Force, I was down at Vandenberg Air Force Base, and it was the first time I'd been to California, had some friends up here in Reading, and I came up to visit them. And it was great. And I went back home to Denver, and I said, "This big city, that little city," and started weighing the options, loaded up my Jeep, put on a trailer, and came back out here. And I think it was the best decision I ever made. Denver's a great, big city for a big city, but it was still too big. And at the time, it was an economic, well, it was a depression back there, and I saw opportunity out here. We had lots of businesses here, you couldn't not find a job when I moved here. So that was something that I really had to weigh heavily, whether I wanted to live there or here. I don't regret that decision.
Mr. Jones.
One of my first decisions as a council member back in 2006 December was to support the first issuance of a bond, $10 million, towards Stillwater Business Park, and I did support that. And I campaigned on Stillwater. Right after that vote, in fact, that night, I knew in my gut that that was a wrong decision, that was the wrong use of public funds. I talked to our city manager the next day and said, "I'll have to start being vocal about this, that I believe this is the wrong use of public funds." And so I had made a mistake, and I then started telling the public that, you know, that this isn't the role of government, that we've strayed too far. And, and so I admit that mistake, and I understand it today, and I think we, it's important that when you make a mistake, that you recognize those mistakes, and you talk about them openly and freely, so that we don't repeat them again.
Mr. Weaver.
Too many. So I have to, there's too many stories. You know, if you, if you said, "Show me a successful person," that person would have countless mistakes that they have learned from, that they have had to pick themselves back up from to get to where they are. We were asked a question last night, "What do you think leadership is?" To me, I think it's the balance of humility and confidence. Humility that you will listen, and that when you have made the wrong decision, or you've gone down the wrong course, that you will backtrack to get that decision right. So I'll tell you probably, probably the biggest lesson of my life here would be my freshman year, my wife and I got set up on a blind date by my brother. And I will tell you what I've been told from her, she was definitely not impressed with me, thought I was arrogant, a little bit too cocky. Fast forward three or four years, I had gone to, on a two-year church mission, I had learned to find some humility in my life. She had served a year and a half mission in South America. We ran into each other, and my sparks flew, and it was the best decision I ever made to come to my senses. I'm grateful she said yes.
Ms. Schrader.
I'm going to use an experience that I had as a school trustee, when about four years ago, we were evaluating our budget, which we do three times a year, and I've done that for 16 years with public funds. So the issue that we faced was what, what direction we wanted to go with our vocational education program, which is an important program here locally for our high school students. So we were faced with the opportunity of being able to save money and do more for our kids through curriculum and programs. So after we learned more information, was, we had a program that's been, was been in place for 30 years, that was, we thought was running really well. We were faced with the opportunity of saving money and then taking that program back to our, into our own district to function independently from the ROP JPA that was established. What we learned after that was, we expanded our program, it's now called Career Tech Education. We have more programs offered, our fire science program is the best in the North State. Almost all of the graduates gets jo, gets, get jobs right out of high school with Cal Fire.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader. Final question of the evening, Mr. DeCristo, this will go to you first. We want to know, how is your campaign and your campaign team a reflection of you?
I think of myself as a modest person, and I don't think of myself as very outgoing. Other people may have different opinions, and some of the things I say may show otherwise. But when I started the campaign, and I asked other people, because I'd always worked for myself, so I would do anything from cleaning the toilet to preparing a legal pleading and getting it done. I had a secretary, but at the end of the day, it was my responsibility. So I would ask people to help me, and, son of a gun, they said, "Yes, we will help you, we will go do this." And I figured, "Well, that's just one person being nice." And the next thing you know, it's two, or it's three, or it's four, or it's eight, or it's 10, and things like that happen. Just recently, I got a call this morning from someone out of the blue, "I'd like to put a sign up at my business." And I said, "Well, there's a lot of signs around town, and you might not want to do that, because there's a whole bunch already." And they said, "No, I want to put a sign up," completely out of the blue. So that person is part of my team. I didn't ask him, but that has, has, maybe I'm past the question. What was the question again?
How is, the question's over. There's your ringer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
You're basically looking at my campaign team, and I'm an independent person, always have been. One year, I ran three, or four races, we won three of them, because I told the message, change your message all the time. And we ran message after message after message, we ran three of those four. I'm an independent. I'm, I'm not on the left, I'm not on the right. I'm a numbers person, I go right down the middle. That's the way I do everything in my life. Pretty much, I'm independent. So I do have a treasurer, and then I have a lot of people who are helping, but do we have campaign meetings and all this? Do I have people influencing me? No. I know what I want to say, I have the ability, because of a radio station, to voice a lot of things that I want to say. I know the message, I can't have somebody else telling me that. So what you see is what you get. I am not going to be influenced by other groups, I've kind of neutralized myself. I work in a, with a lot of people, but it is not somebody who's going to control it, and I can pretty much do it. I know what to do. I'm only going to run one campaign this year, and that's mine.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Jones.
In fact, my team, they're out tonight walking, and they knew I would be here, and so there's about a dozen of them, and I'm very grateful for, for having them. They've come to me over the years, they understand what I've attempted to do at City Hall, and they value that work. They understand the tough decisions that we've made, and the decisions, every time we make a decision, we take that decision, and then we move on to the next order of business. Every decision at City Hall is important, and they know sometimes I stand alone, they know I'm also a fiscal conservative, and I think everybody on my team is the same way. They want to see their city in great financial shape. We all know we have great people here, and they all believe in my vision of being able to balance our budget and move this city forward and still have a great city. And it's, it's basically, I wouldn't say they're all tightwads, but they're all very concerned with the direction that the city has, and I think that's why they've, they've backed me, and they're out there walking tonight, and we're going to be walking neighborhoods all the way till election night.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Question goes to you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, John. So with, I have one person on my team that has experience in politics, and he's, and he's very wise, and he's very smart, and he's given us great advice. The other 10 members of my team are just like me, first timers, never been through this before, and we're figuring it out. But here is the criteria that I put together when I picked my team. I made the decision, if I was going to give a year of my life to run for this seat, I'm running to win, but if, just by that small chance, I do not, I want to make sure that my teammates have learned the process, because they are, I believe, a new generation of leaders. They're positive, they're talented, they work well with people. And I will, I will say this, in this election on November 4th, we are looking for council candidates that love this community more than they love their egos, and I will say this about my team, that it's such an honor to work with each of you, because you embody what I, what I think's best of Reading.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schrader, question goes to you.
Well, I'm proud to say that my, my campaign team is a lot like, I've been working for the last 20 years in our community, and it's through collaboration. I reached out and personally met with everybody that I'd asked to work on my campaign. Most of them have been through personal experience with them in various different projects that I have organized or led in our community, because I wanted a true representation of many different aspects in our community, working together so that we can help figure out the solutions for our community. So I very much want to colla, continue that and collaborate with other city council members to be effective at our city council, to find the solutions that we need going forward in, in our city. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Sullivan.
I'm choked up before I even start. My campaign committee is made up of people that I think are all better than I am. My advisors, the people who are walking door to door, the people who raise money. I worry a lot about being worthy of the time and the effort that they have put into trying to make me a better candidate. I'm grateful I get to spend time with them. I know they all wish I'd listen more carefully, and I'd follow my scripted speech, and we'll have to get back to that. But it is one of the best things about being in a campaign, is the bonding experience with people. Walking door to door just renews your faith in the goodness of people. It's just the most amazing experience. I do have to point out that my most ardent supporter and the person who's working the hardest on our campaign would do almost anything for me, but he's home watching the Giants and the Dodgers.
Thank you. That now concludes the question part. We're now going to hear closing statements from each of the candidates. Now, candidates, I want you to please limit your statement to two minutes. We are going to start with Mike Quinn.
I hope you've gotten a feel for what I'm going to do for the community. I have served this community in a number of ways, on city boards and commissions, three years' worth. If you think that this job is something you can just walk into and say, "It doesn't need a learning curve," it does, and I have learned a lot. For 15 years on my radio station, I've been doing morning show interviews with people from throughout the community, and I've got a feel for this community, and I've given back to it in a number of different ways. I was recognized for that in 2006, so I was named the businessman of the year by the Chamber of Commerce. And I've continued, when I won that award, it didn't mean that I stopped in any way, shape, or form. I've been downtown, I've been working to help downtown, the Cascade Theater when it was built, and I want to continue on with that in another way. I can offer you financial expertise, budgeting, if, if I could just have more time to explain to you what the budgets are and how that they, you know, are not trackable and they're not accountable. I will change that, and I will make sure that we know when we have money for things, because right now, we don't. You never know until you get a full audited statement, which is six months after the year ends. That can be, that's 18 months that you're going around, and you don't know where you're at. But the budget's half cash, half accrual, and if that means anything to you, there's no way to know what you've got. But they continue to spend money, not knowing what's there. Once again, our income is a problem, and it's very, very important that you put somebody in there who is a neutral position, and my numbers speak down the middle. Not left or right, Democrat, Republican, nothing. Numbers, you put them in a budget, and you line them up, and you see where you're at, and it tells you that. And I'm used to doing that, and I hope that I can do that for you, along with all the other community things that we need to get done. Thank you for showing up tonight. Thank you for putting this on. This is, this is what I had always hoped, that we had a big turnout at, at some of these events. We've got more to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Closing statement from Patrick Jones.
I too would like to thank Viva Downtown, The Cascade, you know, for putting on this forum, and especially for all of you folks for coming out tonight and taking an interest in, in the Reading City Council candidates. And to be honest, all of these candidates here would do well at the City of Reading. Each of them have their vision and their goals, and, and I commend them all for running. This is my sixth campaign, I know how difficult it is, and they can be commended for the work that they've done and that they'll continue to do. My vision for Reading is one of being fiscally sound, and I really believe, and over the last eight years, seven and a half years, that that is what I've strived to do. I've been consistent in these areas, I'll be consistent in these areas in the future. I'm not always well-liked, because I'll stand firm on an issue where I believe it's important for the future of Reading. I don't waver on very many issues when, when I believe that we're moving in a wrong direction. And I think most people can count on me for standing firm under any types of pressures in that manner, and there are a lot of pressures out there. I'm very, very blessed to be able to have won an election in 2006 and then been re-elected in 2010, and I'm asking for your vote this November 4th for a third term, to finish the work that we've begun, to make this city better, to make this city financially sound, so that we can have the proper staffing in police and fire, so our roads can be better, so our infrastructure can be better. I think that will be a better city, while not a tough job, and for whomever is elected, they have four years of tough work ahead of them. It will not be fun. We didn't come here, I certainly didn't come here, because this was going to be fun. I can have fun on my own time. This is a very important job. We're entrusting the future of your city with your vote, so you have a great responsibility with that vote, and I trust the system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Closing statement, Brent Weaver.
I want to thank you for taking time out of your week to be here tonight, listen for two and a half hours. I think you're to be commended for your interest in the community and hearing from us, so you can make an informed decision. And I hope you'll go out and talk with your families, and talk with your friends, talk with your coworkers, things you liked, things you didn't like. I also want to thank my fellow candidates as well. Having gone through this the first time, it gives me a lot more appreciation and respect for people who run for office, so I want to commend them. One thing that's been impressed upon me throughout my career is that when you look at successful individuals, or if you look at a successful business, or if you look at a successful local government, it did not happen by chance. It happened because people sat down, and they were able to identify whatever the issue or the problem was, and what they might have to do, whatever that solution might be, or that efficiency, and they applied that, and that's how they moved forward, and whatever it might be, in your personal life, whatever. I believe that our brightest days are ahead of us here in Reading. I'm very, very excited about this election, November 4th. I think we have some very serious issues with public safety. That has definitely been impressed upon me over the past year, as I've been out walking neighborhoods. I hear that more than any other issue, and I make the promise to you that I will not stop, I will not rest, until we get the adequate level of public safety that we expect in this community. I'm asking for your vote on November 4th, and together, we will turn this city around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Closing statement from Kristin Schrader.
As you've heard tonight, and I tried to illustrate some of the examples of my commitment to the City of Reading and the area surrounding it, I am committed to building a better city. I have been demonstrated that in 20, for the past 20 years. The Schrader Planetarium is an honor to my family, and I know we can do better and do more. I have also committed 16 years of service to our community as a school trustee. I think that service is invaluable to working as a city council member, because we, I've learned to be conservative in our review of our budget, $43 million budget at the high school district, so that we can be prepared for everything that comes along in the future. So I ask you for your vote. I have a vision, I have, can work in collaboration and get things done.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader. Closing statement from Francie Sullivan.
Well, with the two minutes that I'd like to be spending telling you why I'd be a good city council member, I am instead going to spend it apologizing to Mr. DeCristo. My evil Irish big-mouthed twin got away from me. And first of all, I want to explain why. We don't have $12.5 million in cash. I know that Mr. DeCristo believes that, but we have several former mayors in this group that will tell you that the cash reserves, which are the city policy that we keep and that we can spend, the money that we, the cash we can blow, if you will, is not the same as the $12.5 million. We, we are required by city policy to keep $3 million in reserves. We actually, last year, had a bump due to changes in assessments because of redevelopment and all kinds of things like that. We did have a little bump, and we do have a larger-than-$3 million reserve. But we also have nine firefighters who are paid with a grant that expires next year. We have four police officers that are paid with a grant that expires next year. We have unfunded liabilities. We have employees that are only being paid to work nine days out of every two-week period. They took a significant pay cut to do that. There were 100 employees laid off before I even went to work there. There is no excess cash, and it makes my heart hurt looking at that little reserve amount and thinking of the needs that we have, and, and to think that anyone, including Mr. DeCristo, thinks that we could resolve that, and we aren't, is just gut-wrenching. So I apologize to you for losing my temper with you. It wasn't, it wasn't, I think it was directed at the frustration of the situation, but I want to be around until we do have money, and we are hiring police, and we are building on the things that are shortcomings in our city. I want to be here for the future, and I do want your vote on November 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Final statement, Michael DeCristo.
Thank you very much. I accept your apology, and if I was out of line, I apologize as well. It doesn't show a very good ability to get along with people when you go and do that, but part of my legal nature is, I get anxious sometimes, and I say, "This is what it is." But here's what I suggest. I will post on my website the papers that I'm relying on and what I'm looking at, and you can look at it. And you can all make up your own minds and see what you want to see and make what you want to make out of it. I stand by what I said, but the decision is not mine, the decision is yours. Now, earlier, I talked about R and D and the letters we could have in our house. This is not an R or D election.
This is a Y election, and Y stands for you. You are the ones that will get to decide who you want to have on the city council and what you want those people to have, what attributes you want them to have. We can't all predict the future and what problems we're going to face, so you need to look at the people here and decide. Are they decision-makers? Do they have ideas that are rational? Can they be supported? Are they able to talk to others and get along with others? And I think that we've shown that we can. I could get along with and talk with anybody on the council, and I can be persuaded, if my mind is wrong, to change it and go forward, and I think Ms. Sullivan showed that she could as well. But ultimately, this, the decision is yours. You need people with a vision to look forward. You can't always say, "This decision was wrong in the past," and rehash it and rehash it. Life moves forward, not backwards. I appreciate your attention tonight. I do want to thank the people that put the event on. It's very nice. It's much nicer than when I was host of the Sundial Film Festival and the light shined right in your eyes. I wish everybody a good evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you all for just doing a great job. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Reading area, Viva Downtown, the Record Searchlight, the Cascade Theater, the Shasta County Arts Council, I'd like to thank all of you for your attendance here tonight. We also want to remind you that the Shasta Arts Council has filmed this event.